Speaking on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission, just a couple introductory comments and then outline the four topics on the table and try to save most of the time for your inquiries on what we're going to do. Before you got here, you got a packet in advance that showed the purpose of the commission, a sampling of some of, by no means exhaustive, issues that we've worked on, and then in your packet were three attachments on things that we really worked on with high impact, we hope. One of those, the first one is an executive summary of the fields changes, the new field policy. We'll reference that tonight because it was very significant. Our memo to you folks on Coverley, and then our recommendation on the golf course reconfiguration, which actually also touches on the 10 and 1/2 acres. I could have added, right now, which is our recommendation on the El Camino Park design, which was, seemed like at least a two-year process, a little older than some of the other ones, but very effective, and we're pleased that the original design that was on the table is one that you voted to endorse and to commence construction and get that park back open. So, thanks much. So, we picked four topics to get some visibility on tonight, and we're going to only spend a couple minutes, four of us are going to present in a couple of minutes each, each of these four topics. The first one is just to touch on the long-range Parks and Rec Master Plan, which you approved very recently, and how that's going to shape kind of strategic goals for what we want to do for, you know, years to come. Second is, together, we've somehow created 10 and 1/2 new acres in Palo Alto, out at the Baylands, so now we have a unique opportunity to decide what's the best way to use that. And then, third, dogs. Efforts to date have not really been effective to create dog parks, so we'd like to look at another opportunity to do that. And then, fourth, the golf course project is well underway, but wait, there's more. We think that there's a couple of other things we can do there to really make that thing pretty magnificent. So, those are the four topics. As we come back to comments, you can decide if you want to do them in order or you just want to jump in. Questions?
Go on.
All right. So, Commissioner Cromer is going to talk briefly on the master plan.
Okay. So, why do we need a Parks and Rec, why do we need a Parks and Recreation Master Plan? The city's comprehensive plan provides for parks, recreation, and the preservation of nature in our city. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan will be a blueprint for greater effectiveness, including a continuation of what is working and a plan for those changes needed to make things work better. The contract for this master plan has just been awarded to a consulting firm called MIG, and work is to begin in early 2014. The full commission and ad hoc committees will work closely with the consultant to design surveys, conduct outreach meetings, and interpret the feedback. Our deliverables are, first, to inventory and assess park resources and recreational programs and services; to determine community preferences and project future needs through demographic analysis in a community need study; and to plan for needed capital development, including costs and funding resources, funding sources. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to make a couple of comments on the Baylands 10 and 1/2 acre land bank. So, from time to time, we've heard council references to this land bank as the Baylands Athletic Fields, and we'd like to encourage, in conjunction with this master plan, a look at multiple needs and multiple uses to plan that space accordingly. Specifically regarding fields, a lot has changed in the city for the good since our Got Space study was done in 2002, and as we look at what's happening right now today, the short-term needs for field usage is covered. There's no emergency on that. And that's really substantially, as a result of two things. One is new and better fields, and the other is now this, this new field policy that adds immense efficiency to the, to the planning. So, just briefly, on the fields, there are now two new and lighted fields at Stanford that are turf. There's an artificial turf field at Coverley. There's another new turf field going in at El Camino Park, which, if lights were added, would extend the number of field hours that we could get off of that field. So, there's a lot just more. But, secondly, we almost, almost like land bank, we're able to create more practice fields and game fields with the new field policy. And I'm just going to touch on two points. It's more comprehensive in the, in the materials that we sent you in advance. So, practice slots have now been precisely defined by time and by age group to, in effect, create this more field space and to reduce downtime when, because of poor scheduling or inefficient scheduling, I should say, people just aren't on the fields at all. So, we're just getting a lot more usage out of the same real estate. And then, secondly, more fields are now going to be available because teams have to cancel any unnecessary, unneeded fields in a real timely manner in order to get a nice, a nice refund on that. So, there's a financial incentive for them to put their fields back into inventory so that it can then be taken out as needed. And these have already been, you know, substantial changes that have had a substantial positive effect. Relative to long-term field use, we don't have the answer to that, which is kind of part of the point, is that we should take a look at the master plan study, which will allow us to study the long-term field needs, both at Baylands and other places, but also that gives us an opportunity to look at a number of alternative recreational opportunities out there. So, for example, after all the study, we might decide that we need two fields and a gym and open space, or we might decide that we actually don't need any fields out there at all. We don't know. But, we would like to go ahead with the master plan before we kind of rush to judgment on, on fields creation. It's just an amazing new piece of land in the city and a unique opportunity that doesn't come up very often. So, we'd just like to use that opportunity and plan wisely.
All right.
Okay. Dog, dog parks. As you all know, we have a big unmet demand for dog exercise areas in Palo Alto, both for walkable neighborhood dog parks and for a large area where you can really let your dogs off-leash to run it out. In 2010, the commission took a first step towards trying to address those needs by adopting a policy that directs staff to consider dog park opportunities, among other recreational interests, every time a new park renovation or improvement comes up for consideration. Sadly, three years later, that policy still hasn't borne any fruit. So, we're trying to take a new look and figure out a better approach that'll be more effective. We want to better target efforts and investments on identifying and accommodating the best-suited neighborhood park arrangement, taking into account localized demand, competing interests, park size, et cetera, instead of trying to build capacity on an ad hoc basis, which is what we've been trying to do to date. The master plan, we believe, as well as some focused outreach, will help us prioritize those efforts quite a bit. We also want to explore a shared use pilot for a large space to allow big dogs or running dogs to really go crazy in, in a big space. We're thinking off-leash and a fenced athletic field during unused morning hours. Now, Menlo Park has had a successful shared use partnership at their Neyland Park baseball field you may have heard about since 2005, and that model is, basically, there's a dog owners group that they've partnered with who provides sector-by-sector cleanup on a daily basis. Then, the city irrigates immediately after the dog hours, and I think the city also made a small initial investment in signage and a little bit of fencing to provide double-gated entries. And key to the success of that program has really been the partnership with a dog owners group who could cover that cleanup side. We think now that a similar group has formed in Palo Alto, the Palo Alto Dog Owners Group, I don't know if anybody's here from there today, their membership is at a few hundred, I think, already, and we're optimistic that that will provide the opportunity for us to really pursue a partnership that could work here in Palo Alto. It would definitely be controversial. There's going to have to be a lot of outreach and a lot of negotiation to figure out how to make it work, but we think it's worth pursuing, at least as a pilot project.
And then, fourth, Commissioner Reckel?
I'll talk about the golf course. Hello? I think it's just for, it's for recording, it's not for golf. I'm really excited about this golf course. From a park standpoint, there's more native plants, there's less irrigated turf. And from a golf standpoint, it'll be spectacular. You'll have bay views, you'll have challenging holes. It really will be a destination course for the Bay Area, so it's something we're really proud of. We are concerned, though, that this beautiful course now will be a bit tarnished by its aging facilities, and, you know, this isn't just a quest for perfection. This really is, it's more dollars than cents. The golf course makes money for the city. We want, yeah, that. So, we don't think the amount of revenue that we'll be able to get out of this golf course will be maximized with the current facilities. So, to help us out, the staff is proposing a 2015 CIP, and that will renovate the golf course parking lot. So, in addition to repaving the parking lot, we'll add trees, we'll improve the aesthetics. We'll also add pedestrian walkways to Bixby Park and also to the Baylands. Now, Bixby Park right now has a very small parking lot, and so this will really help. The golf course parking lot would be a logical place to put over full parking. Also, just a principle thing, we have these facilities down in the Baylands, we really should make it as easy as possible for walkers and joggers and bikers to get from one spot to the other. So, we really are excited about this CIP, which would be for the next year, 2015. Also, staff is looking at other ways of taking the plaza and the entrance and the restrooms and making that look prettier and be more functional. So, both those things will help with the facilities. But, the other thing left is clubhouse. There are currently no plans to renovate the clubhouse. It'd make a lot of sense to renovate the clubhouse at the same time that you're renovating the whole golf course, everything all at once. But, there's some complications to that. First off, is that in 2018, all three contracts, for the golf course itself, for the restaurant and pro shop, they all come up for renewal at that point. If we remodel right now, potential bidders may not like what we do. It may be design features or functionality that we think is good that they didn't in their business plan. So, that would give us a reason to push it off to 2018. But, that means also your golf course now is not opening with a remodel. The second issue, though, is if we do have any type of remodeling, clubhouse remodeling, that would require a lot of ARB paperwork, and that paperwork will be done by the same staff that's pushing the golf course redesign through all these various permitting agencies. So, it's a staff limitation issue. So, if you stagger the golf course redesign with the clubhouse remodeling, it allows staff to better cover that. And the third is the pro shop. The pro shop, its business is being hurt currently by the redesign, not getting much traffic, not as much business. Went through recently a renegotiation of the contract, and now if we add another aspect, the fact that the clubhouse would have a major remodel, that also would affect the pro shop and its contract. So, that complicates things. So, in order to get the maximum functionality of this beautiful new course, we really do want new amenities, but the timetable isn't trivial. The optimal timetable isn't clear. I think this is something that both staff and commission should take a careful look at and make a good decision.
Okay. That's our presentation.
All right. So, now we return to council for questions and comments. Councilmember Vice Mayor Shepard.
Well, first off, thank you very much for your work, and it is very noticeable, and I think that following along, particularly with the randomness of the dog park concept, I'm glad that you brought that up, because I would like to support your efforts to try to divine new experiences. I like the concept of partnering with the dog group, and I just want to remind you that Palo Alto is okay with failing, but let's take a look at the failure. If it doesn't work right away, if there's something wrong with it, then go back, look at it, and see if we can get it right, because I think that there is a, a need for this. There's, I know I've been emailed a number of times by people that want to have a place where their big dogs can run, and the sorry sights that I see with some of our dog parks, they're just really not meant for a good experience. So, if you can just keep that in mind. Regarding the golf course fields, the land banking, I'm not sure that council has ever brought any clarity to this, except for the fact that we had this opportunity to reconfigure the golf course and do it in a strategic way that would be, like he says, a good experience for golfers and yet, and a better experience for being in the Baylands, and to take advantage of the Bayland experience during your golf, golfing. But, I've had four kids play sports, as I've raised my children here in Palo Alto, and I know that there's concerns with putting those fields way out there. You'll be competing with traffic in the evening, and quite frankly, it would look like it could be, with the two other fields that are already out there, the concept of tournament play might start to be verbalized more, you know. I know my girls in particular, their terminants would be down in 237 corridor at that park there, where there's a ton of fields, you park, there's a snack bar and everything. I just want to make sure that you vet all of that thoughtfully, see if that's really the Palo Alto experience for inventing these fields, because if not, I think it could become a de facto tournament play, and I just want to make sure that we really are strategic about using that, because I do know that there are many opportunities that Palo Alto, during my kids' soccer, softball, baseball experiences, they really wanted to be able to offer term, term, tournament play and host it. And yet, it was a feature for some of the smaller towns to really be able to get, you know, people going, going to those areas, and we don't have quite the open space that they would have. And then, finally, I understand the, the concerns about the clubhouse and the pro shop, and I share them. So, go ahead, and I'm going to support you in, you know, making some good thinking decisions about that, how to partner with, helping maybe with loans with the people that are operating it. I know that we, you know, you know, work with people that are professionals there, and so, you know, figure out, you know, how to, how and when to make it happen, so we have good advice there. And then, I also just wanted to remark that when I did travel in China this last October during the Smart City Symposium Tour, one of the golf courses I saw was Audubon certified, and I'd never heard of that before. So, I don't know if you want to take a look and see what that means and whether or not that would be a desirable certification for us while we're building this, but I thought I'd just throw that out there and let you mull it over. So, thank you for your work and, and your passion, actually. I see a lot of passion with you, so, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah. I've been the liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission. It's been a very enjoyable year. What really impresses me about that is the careful, detailed discussions based on good data that you've had, not always in full agreement, but you vet processes so that when it comes to the council, it can be accepted with full confidence of what you do. Just a little footnote on the master plan. There is a seven and a half acre site up in bordering Foothill Park on the Los Tranquil Valley. Would extend that valley for a half mile. It is deed restricted to park in open space, and it would be wonderful if you took a look at, does that belong as part of Foothill Park?
Councilmember Holman.
Well, I've also had the pleasure of being liaison to, well, four of, four of you anyway, and I have to say about you that you are the best and brightest. I so enjoyed my time with you and echo the comments that Councilmember Schmidt has made. And I would also echo his question about the seven acres, seven and a half acres up there. Having to do with the Parks and Rec master plan, have you considered the Stanford Mayfield playing fields, because those are not in perpetuity? And while it is sometime out, I think it was 51 years, I think, is what those are good for, but after that, I think we start paying a pretty considerable sum to keep those. So, when you're doing the master planning, think really long-range about how do we replace those, or do we need to replace them, and, you know, that sort of thing. The dog parks, having to do with dog parks or just generally speaking, Jennifer, you'll remember that I was very interested in Sterling Canal, because I think it is just, it's just lying there fallow and has, you know, a lot of potential for, you know, community garden, dog park, trail connectivity, you know, any number of things. So, I don't know if you've been looking at that or if that's kind of fallen off the radar or what. And also, if anybody has anything to say about what the status is of the app, the Parks and Trails app that you were developing, is there any update on that?
No, I don't think we've done anything about that. I think we started to start with the website overhaul, which we're serving in progress.
Okay.
And that was beyond our scope at this stage.
Okay.
But, we wrote it on the list. I know you're very interested in it.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you for that. And the Baylands, the Lucy Evans, I presume that you're looking at that as a part of, you know, one of the projects that also needs updated out there? Are you commenting on that as a part of your work plan and CIP input? The building itself, the Lucy Evans Interpretive Center, it's really, it's really a little sad out there. So, keep that in mind. And then, also, I would really like to have the commission's input on two things, not at this moment, but on, in a integration into your work plan and with staff working with you. Again, going to Baylands, but this could also apply to a restaurant preserve or Foothill Park. Sometimes we have work that's done to, especially the parking lots, that makes them look urban, even though they're in natural environments, with the best of intentions that we have, you know, blue handicap curbing and put-in and all kinds of like really urban signage and paint and that sort of thing, that really don't fit in those environments. I would like to see how you all could be more integrated in that or how you can work with staff to have better oversight of that. And also, because of these larger projects that have come forward, like the golf course, it makes sense, because you've been so involved, that, that the EIRs come to you as well. And so, if that involves you all getting some sequoia training, you know, all of us could stand more sequoia training, so don't worry about that aspect of it. But, I'd really like you to consider kind of the holistic approach to, to this, and I saw Shawnee here too, is like if anybody is a, an Audubon person or, you know, bird wildlife expert, if there's any kind of training that would be beneficial to the, to the group too, because you do such a good job, so I'm just piling more on you. But, you know, however you can integrate all these different aspects of the large charge that you do have would be well appreciated, and thank you very much for your service.
Councilmember Burt.
A few things. One, thanks for the report. I really did find it valuable. The mention of redoing the parking lot at the golf course, I'm guessing it's part of what you're envisioning, but it wasn't mentioned that that creates a real opportunity to look at a parking lot that is one big slab of asphalt and turn it into something that fits into the Baylands better. So, I'm seeing heads nodding. Do you have a call on that? And then, there was mention about the pro shop and restaurant, and I recall the discussions we had, I don't recall them verbatim, but I have my sense of recollection of it, which maybe Rob can confirm or, or not on that, that when we looked at the, at the business model for the course, if the projections on revenue pan out in the ballpark of what was provided to us, then that would be creating revenue in future years to be able to invest in the facilities there. We don't have really other revenue sources, and those funds would be an enterprise fund and really couldn't be used for general fund purposes either. So, that was the thinking at the time. Is that, is my recollection roughly right? Okay, good. And then, I got one other question for Rob, whether my recollection is correct, and that is around, my recollection is that the council did specifically support this 10-plus acres to go toward playing fields there. And that doesn't mean it couldn't be revisited, if there are good arguments why that should be changed, but it's, it's not something that was left open. So, Rob, I, maybe if that can be brought back to, for clarification on what, what, what direction the council gave when we, when we approved the golf course redesign. My, my recollection was that the council's...
You need a microphone.
The council asked staff and the golf course architect to design the golf course in such a way that made room for possible playing fields in the future, and so that's what we did, but...
Yeah. I think we should look back at the record. I, I don't think it was just a hypothetical possibility, it was an intention, and that it got redesigned for that purpose. Otherwise, we wouldn't have taken those acres out. There was no other purpose that was discussed. Now, if there are good arguments why that is no longer the best direction to take, then we can revisit that, but that, we as individual council members aren't at liberty to change direction, so I don't want you to misinterpret. If there, if you want to make a recommendation to the council that we reconsider something and you provide your recommendation, then that's, that's perfectly appropriate, but, but I want to make sure that we, we have as the foundation what was the actual direction, and we should revisit what that really was. And then, I do want to echo also Councilmember Holman's point on looking at the Lucy Evans Interpretive Center. That was a valued community resource, and it has been diminished in the, in the importance that's been placed on it, and I would hope that we could look at how do we make that a thriving place again? And, and it had a great deal of value for schoolchildren. I would, I don't recall specifics of whether we had any, I don't think any real formal agreement with the school district and classes that, and field trips would be there, and now that might be an opportunity for collaboration. But, in any event, I'd just like to echo that that's an area that I would care about. And then, I'm glad you're continuing to work on the dog park issue. I have a question, and I don't want to get into lead time, but the, like, one that I'm familiar with, I, there was discussion around Pardee Park, and then apparently Pardee's going forward with rebuild without a dog park. Can I get the 30-second version of how the dog park didn't happen?
We did outreach to the neighborhood, and they expressed interest in not having a dog park, as well as restroom facilities at that site.
So, I guess I pose this as a somewhat rhetorical question. Do we think that we have, would have any neighborhood park in the city where the immediate neighbors would support a dog park? I don't think so. I can't think of one. So, how do we get to a process where they have veto power, it never came to council, and we acquiesce? So, I, I would suggest we need a process by which we weigh values and, yes, we will hear howls of outcry anytime that goes in, and same thing goes with, with restaurants. It doesn't mean it's necessarily the wrong thing to do. So, I was concerned that, gee, we had this opportunity to redo it, and I, I assumed it was still percolating in the discussions, and the next thing I heard was, nope, the design's been settled on, we're getting ready to do construction. I'm going, gee, we didn't have any voice in that. So, I, I would say to both staff and to the commission that, that these kinds of issues I would like as a council member to be able to weigh in. Doesn't mean I would in the end disagree with the decision, but I think these are important calls, we're never going to get there if we assume that we would have to have the strong support of immediate neighbors to get them.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, thank you guys very much for the report. I've been reading the memos and letters as they've come along, but it was also helpful to see it all kind of at once and get a big picture for me at least, of all of the work that you guys do and all the different kind of interesting projects that, that are happening right now. Councilmember Burt mentioned howls of outcry if we ever put a dog park in any neighborhood. I also recall receiving howls of outcry about six months ago about a field use policy that to me was, was kind of out of nowhere. I, you know, didn't realize what was happening, and then all of a sudden, we're getting dozens of emails from, from concerned residents about the new policy. I'm assuming that's this policy that seems to have been quite successful. Have we heard any concerns from residents since it's been implemented about... successful. Have we heard any concerns from residents since it's been implemented about folks not being able to get the field space they want and all these things? Or is it all going incredibly smoothly?
It's going incredibly smoothly. It's going to be a rock and crush that, yeah.
That's great. Well, congratulations to you guys. It seems like it's, you know, the city's benefited from kind of creating more space out of our existing assets. And to be able to do that without having kind of negative impacts on folks is, is pretty impressive. I don't know if you had...
It was incredibly complicated. An ad hoc committee, including Commissioner Cromer, that worked on it, I don't even know how many, effectively how many months. It was incredibly complicated, so...
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that, you know, everybody, and well worth it in the end to, to get that increased usage. One question I had on the dog parks was the Menlo Park example that they're using, or that, that they have currently implemented, is that on, and this might be a silly question, because maybe no fields are really grass anymore, but is that on a grass field or a turf field?
It's a grass baseball field, so the outfield is...
Oh, it is a grass baseball field.
And the outfield is grass.
And, and they have, as far as we know so far, you know, Little Timmy hasn't fallen in a pile of dog poo or anything?
As far as we know, it's...
He slipped.
...five, so...
Yeah.
They've resolved whatever issues they may have had along the way.
Good. Well, I'll look forward to hearing if maybe that's, you know, something possible that we can use. I think those are my main questions or comments. So, thanks, guys.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, thank you for your presentation, which I had, unfortunately, had to miss, and my apologies for that. So, I've been sort of catching up by listening to my colleagues, and just want to address a couple of issues that are on your list and are near and dear to me. One, as a dog owner, I'm very concerned about the dog park issue. I think that from having compared notes with dog owners in other communities, that we are underserved, and that we're going to have to be creative, given our shortage of land. But I think that there has to be some solutions, whether it's the Menlo Park one that councilmember Berman referred to, or the Sterling Canal, which councilmember Holman referred to. I think it's time that we did something. We tried on the El Camino Park, and that really wasn't going to work. So, fine, we've withdrawn, retreated from that. But to me, this is an issue that's not going away. As you, I'm sure, have heard, there is now an organization of, of dog owners that are going to be lobbying us more on this issue. So, I think we, we need to respond in one way or another, and do a lot better than we have. I would like to also say that I think councilmember Burt's understanding of the fields to be developed at the golf course site is correct. We didn't leave that as a big blank. My recollection is really the same as his, that the expectation was that we would be designing playing fields. And I'm not quite sure where the vice mayor was coming from on that issue in her remarks, but I think all of us would, of course, acknowledge that that's not the perfect place, or even close to being a perfect place for playing fields, certainly not for little kids, but that we don't have any other good options, and that you could certainly see putting teenagers or seniors out on playing fields there. Of course, the real question is, do we have a need? And we've heard from you all and your predecessors over and over again that we have a need for more playing fields. And if that's no longer the case, that would be interesting. But that if we do, I am at a loss as to what's, where is a better place. So, until we get some persuasive arguments to the contrary, I expect us to move forward with the playing fields of one kind or another there for groups other than, than little kids, and that we're, and Nancy, I'll have to talk to you later, but it seems to me that if we had tournaments there, that'd be, be good, not bad. I don't see what would be wrong with having tournaments of, of teenagers, soccer, lacrosse, whatever else, or popular games that would use a field like that. So, I hope we will be moving forward along those lines as well as we, as the golf course project moves along as well. So, I don't think we're writing on a blank, blank piece of paper on that one at all.
Oh, you're going to pass?
I'm going to pass. So, any other questions have been asked, or statements have been made? Thank you for your great work.
If you feel a need to, if you don't... I kind of do. I feel like...
Go ahead.
First off, I'm not asking for the commission to change direction from what council did do, and I didn't want to make that not clear. I do know that we did discuss this as being playing fields, but not what type of playing fields. There is a possibility to figure it, configure it in tournament play, which is a very dynamic thing that happens, and I've experienced it many times. And so, I just want to make sure that if that's where it goes, that we really do vet it thoughtfully and seriously. Those were my points. And if this really doesn't pan out, then I expect the commission to be able to, you know, defend how to, how to manage field use in the future, but not necessarily to take you in a different direction, so...
Councilmember Niss.
I would commend all of you for really taking something on and, and making it happen. A field, new field policy is dramatic in Palo Alto, so I, I hope that's being duly noted. If there, and I think what I heard you say, I presume, Ed, you're the chair?
Yes.
Is, is that there, that the need now is not necessarily satisfied, but that, that there is at least a smooth going forth as far as...
Today, short-term needs are covered, and long-term needs have to be investigated. That's our current position.
I think that short-term needs are covered is extremely important, and I'm so glad to hear that. Even though I don't have a dog, I guess I would say... Let me finish. There's a dog in our family.
There is.
I don't have time for a dog. And so, I'm, I'm well aware of that need. And I hesitate to mention this, but there is a field in Palo Alto that's well-used. I think councilmember Klein knows a great deal about it, and I think we're all hesitating to say something. But it's, it certainly is well-used. I don't know how it is policed. I've always wondered, because I have never heard of, however, somebody delicately described it as falling into something unpleasant. But I, I've never heard of that happening at that particular field. I know that there, there is a need, but I'm very familiar with Neyland. That's a park. I'm often there with my grandkids. But dogs are frequently just off-leash there, just running around and having a great time. So, I don't know their policies regarding that, but in the middle of any Saturday or Sunday, they're free to roam. I know because we keep the family dog, which isn't mine, but is a family dog, on the leash, so that even though he would love to be out there with all the other dogs. But I, I'm not quite sure why the baseball field has been singled out, but you can tell us that at another time. But I have noticed in many parts of Palo Alto, dogs do run fairly freely at parks, for, for whatever that's worth. I guess that's not a dog run, but it certainly seems like dog exercise. So, beyond that, I think, I mean, I'll be fascinated about the golf course and what happens there. And the thought of a world-class golf course is certainly tempting. I don't know if it's realistic. Thanks.
Thanks. I did want to thank you for all your hard work. We, you know, we know you guys do a great job, and I was particularly impressed with the field policy as well. And I guess what I'm hearing from you all is that we did have a problem with the shortage of fields, but the new field policy opened up a lot of field time. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
And that's the big change?
That's the big change. In addition to, in the last 10 years, three new fields with lights. It's a lot more...
So, the lights made a big difference?
Yeah. They always do.
And then over on El Camino Park, you talked about that also if we added lights to that. Are we expecting to add lights? Is that in the budget? Is that part of it? Or where are we with the lights on that?
I'm, I'm looking at Greg or Rob, because we have this discussion, but I don't think it's currently in CIP, right?
It's currently not in the CIP. We're putting in the infrastructure to add lights later, but it's not in the budget. And we do feel like we do need to do some more outreach, because there are some residents that are fairly close to that field, that north field.
Okay. So, what would it cost to put in the lights?
I don't have the... Yeah, about $100,000?
So, about $100,000?
There's your legacy, Greg.
I'll leave that for your legacy, Karen.
Approximately.
It's just lights.
Because they already put in the infrastructure, so I guess they're just going to add the lights.
Right.
I mean, I got to say, $100,000 in the scheme of our, you know, 150-plus million-dollar budget is not a lot of money. I mean, so I think it's more of an issue with the, the neighbors and the outreach, and I don't think the $100,000 should be the issue here at all. So, hopefully, you guys can look at that. No, I don't mean, I hope you guys will do the outreach, and, I mean, I don't think the $100,000 is the issue, frankly.
Could I ask a question on that?
No, can I finish?
Do you have a minute?
All right. All right, go ahead. Go ask your question.
Well, it's on that same line, because I know Palley is now very well-lit. And yet, you've had no complaints about Palley or Gunn? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We don't get complaints.
The district gets the complaints, and yes, they're... Oh, okay. Thank you, because I wondered where they went. They don't go away, but it's fine.
So, along those lines, I'm very sympathetic to putting in a new clubhouse, and getting the parking lot up, making it look like getting the pro shop fixed up. I mean, getting it to be fantastic out there. I mean, it is going to be a great golf course, and to not fix that seems somewhat foolish, frankly. And I would love to see you guys weigh in and bring it to council. And, you know, I mean, you know, give us your best advice. You know, just in your short thing, I would probably lean towards doing it sooner than later. I think opening it is a fantastic buzz. You get it opened, it starts off the playing and the course, and it'll create a success as opposed to, well, the revenues have to catch up if people don't enjoy the experience and don't enjoy hanging out there. And the clubhouse is one of the things that makes it. So, you could actually have a self-defeating where you don't get the revenue projection, so you never get the, and people say it's not a success.
That's exactly our point.
So, I mean, I really would encourage you, I mean, you know, we sit up here, we have you as the Parks and Rec to give us advice, and we'd love to hear from you guys and say, no, we really think you need to do that clubhouse now, and we'll debate it and listen to you. And then, you know, do it or not do it. But I think we should. I mean, one of the things I think we should note is that, you know, our revenues are increasing. We're in a much better situation than we were before. And some of these things may very well be worth doing. And, you know, whereas when we talked about this initially, they, we didn't really have the money or the ability to do it. And I think that's changed a little bit. I think that there's more of an opportunity to do that. So, I would definitely encourage you to do that. I have to weigh in with councilmember Klein and councilmember Burt. My recollection on the fields is the same, that it was, the plan was to do fields out there. And I think when we met, I told you that was my, my recollection of it. That doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, but if it's not, I don't think you can unilaterally do it. I think you need to, you know, come forward and say why you don't think it should be fields. I can tell you that I'm interested in how the master plan works. For me, it's whether or not we should do the fields now, or later, or some other sort of athletic center or something. I think there are going to be very few opportunities to create many more fields down the, the future. And I think to not landbank it, or make fields out of it, I think it would be a tough sell to me. But I mean, I'm open to understanding why we wouldn't do that, and what else we, what else the opportunities are. I was very intrigued with your concept of the dog park, like they're doing in Menlo Park. Where exactly, do we have a place in mind that we could do that, or were we still trying to vet that?
We have definitely not vetted that yet. I think there are a variety of places that we could consider. There's, I think there's some partial fencing that's been sort of added in at Greer Park with the intention of maybe making that a location. The baseball fields down at Baylands Athletic Center might be another place to consider. Sterling Park might be a doable option, though. I believe PG&E has fenced it all off this past year, so I'm not sure. We'd have to figure out whose, whose is whose over there. And certainly, we would look into other areas as well, and I think we'd do that in consultation with the community and with the dog owners group.
Okay. And just briefly, is a dog park most useful in the, you know, in the local parks in the area, or a, a big area where people could drive to and, and run their dogs?
There's definitely demand for both, that there are neighborhoods that are unserved by a local dog park, so they have to get in their car to drive to the puny little dog park that's across town.
Because...
But there's also a huge demand for a big area.
Because it was this year we really became aware as a council, or was it last year?
Last year.
That, you know, of that seven and a half acres up by...
Last year.
Foothill. You know, I don't think any of us really knew that existed. And I do think that that would be interesting for you guys to take a look at that and say, you know, it is contiguous to Foothill Park, we could add it to Foothill Park. Or could it be a dog park? I mean, there are very few places where we have seven and a half acres where you could do stuff like that. So, I'm just raising that. I think you guys should take a look at that and think about that, seven and a half acres, and what we should do with that. All right. Sure, one quick follow-up?
One very quick follow-up. In talking about the buildings, pro shop, clubhouse at the golf course, I happen to be still liaison to Parks and Rec when the golf course designer made a presentation, and it was the, the WOW presentation, as some of you will remember. And he had done wonderful research, and the buildings out there were designed, some of them were built, some of them hadn't been built, were designed by A. Quincy Jones, who's a prominent architect, mid-century designer. And the buildings that had been proposed out there, I mean, the whole, and the council didn't get that presentation. Parks and Rec didn't. They didn't, we didn't get the whole presentation that Parks and Rec got.
I remember. It was beautiful.
Yeah. So, Parks and Rec got the whole presentation. It was fantastic. Now, what the staging and sequencing of that is, I don't want to speak to and don't have the notion, but it's a beautiful design.
And that's the original designs that were never done, right?
But part of it was built, like the, the clubhouse, I think, had been built, and then it was like changed into this that we have now. But some of the other buildings weren't built. They were designed but not built, is my recollection.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. And now we need to retire out there.
Retire?
Thank you. Yes.
Her and her great contribution.
So, I guess the first thing we need to do on special of the day is we need a motion as to selection of candidates to be interviewed with Storm Drain Oversight Committee. I'll move that we interview all candidates.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, if we could vote on the board? And that passes with councilmember Niss missing an action? All right. So, next we have city manager comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council members did want to, it's that holiday season again, and so once again, our utilities department is offering our residency opportunity to exchange up to two old incandescent holiday light strings for new, highly efficient LED holiday lights for free. Our customers started receiving coupons for conducting the exchange last week, and the offer is good through the month of December while supplies last. This year, the light string exchange is taking place at Palo Alto Hardware in Alma rather than City Hall, which hopefully would be more convenient for most of our residents. On the subject of the University Avenue tree removal and replacement project that I think I reported on about six months ago, the final phase of the University Avenue tree maintenance is scheduled to begin this coming Wednesday. And our tree maintenance contractor, West Coast Arboris, will begin tree removals along University Avenue between Middlefield Road and the northeastern city limit and San Francisco Creek on December 4th, with completion scheduled December 16th. This tree removal project began in June of this year, and however, further removal was deferred until December to minimize the time between removal and replanting, so that we have the opportunity to replant, at least during the time of year where we typically get rain. So, let's hope we do this winter. This phase includes removal of 25 trees that are decayed, dying, or structurally unsound, or poorly located to where a removal is warranted. We, the initial phase had numerous outreach campaigns involving press and television coverage as far as website postings, and staff has met with homeowners and distributed literature to outline the project. Response to this notification's been positive. No objections have been raised. Due to existing utility conflicts, only 11 of these sites will be replanted, and replanting will incur with, occur within a month of removal. And replacement species include 10 southern magnolias and one linden tree. Hours of work will be from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Hours of work will be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and all efforts will be taken to minimize disruption to the flow of traffic. And did want to announce again that from December 10th to December 14th, and from December 17th to December 21st, Caltrain is expected to do some work within their right-of-way within Palo Alto. Caltrain will be digging a small trench and borrow close to the tracks to install a fiber optic cable that will support their advanced signal system. And the advanced signal system will equip the corridor with federally mandated safety technology. The work will be performed between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Caltrain is in the process of sending a letter to all residents within one-eighth of a mile of the corridor on either side of the tracks, so people who live in that area should expect to receive the mail or shortly. This work will not include the installation of electrical wires or any grade separations or any thing of that sort. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Sure. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Jim, I have just a quick question. I know during the holiday, usually we extend our downtown parking from two hours to three hours. I wanted to know if that was in the works this year or not.
I will get a report back to the council. I don't have all of the details, but I think in actually working with the merchants this year, there were some reasons that the decision was made to not actually change that seasonal parking system and keep the existing time limits in order to support more turnover. I'll send out a more detailed clarification.
Thank you. I just want to know, because I use it sometimes, and that extra hour comes in handy.
All right, councilmember questions and comments? Any lights? All right, seeing none, I'll just mention a couple of things. We did the holiday tree lighting this week. It was very well attended. I'd say we had well over 100 people, and there were lots of little Palo Altons making snowmen, and it was very cute. And there were these miniature snowmen, and we had a judging competition. And it was a really nice event, and I wanted to thank city staff and, and our sponsors, Silicon Valley Bank, who sponsored it. And it was a great event. The other thing that happened this week is we did the turkey trot, and I'm pleased to report that we broke Mountain View's hold on the Mayor's Cup, that they've held since 2008. And Palo Alto received the Mayor's Cup this year. And it was also a nice event down there.
Is that it?
That's it. That's, that's the cup. It's got a little turkey on it for the turkey trot. And the turkey trot had some 25,000-plus people there. It was, it was quite an event. I think it's the largest turkey trot in the United, in the United States. Yeah. So it was a great event. And I, of course, ran the 10K. I was very pleased with that.
You ran it.
I ran it in an eight-minute mile.
Wow.
So I was, I was fairly impressed.
Turn it so the TV cameras can pick up the.
The turkey trot?
Yeah, it's a turkey.
Yes, it's a turkey, we'll pick it up for the cameras. Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Well, I just wanted to note that about a week ago, I did go down to the ribbon cutting or the ceremony to open the anaerobic digester down at the, down at the Zanker Road facility in San Jose. Councilmember Berman and Niss were there. And we got to walk into the big containers that will be, that they will be putting in restaurant recyclables, and within 30 days, they, it will transition itself into energy. And it's, it was fascinating to see, fascinating to walk around, fascinating to look at the proximity to their waste treatment plant and their, their own landfill. But a, a good visual for me to understand how this works, and it was very informative. Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing further. Now we move to oral communications. And our first person up is, would you have your light on?
No.
Ah, Councilmember Klein.
Sorry for the late light, but I just, I thought that we ought to say a word about the very significant decisions on high-speed rail issued by the court in Sacramento last week. And I know all of you are familiar with the very significant roadblocks that have been put in the way of high-speed rail now. High-speed rail is certainly not dead, but it's, how to make, it's an, I would say it's in intensive care. But I wanted to make, speak on it, just because having read columns and editorials from one end of the state to the other, it's nice to see us get some credit, or in many cases, criticized by some of the proponents of high-speed rail, who in effect say that one of the problems high-speed rail has had is the cities of Atherton, Menlo Park, and Palo Alto, who put roadblocks in the way of it in the fore. And for us bad guys, high-speed rail would be moving along. So I think that a slight pat on the back for us for helping to, I think, put a stop to what I think would be the biggest boom-boggle in the history of the state.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, on a related issue, I just wanted to report that the, as I represent the council on the policymaker working group to the JPA, the Caltrain JPA, that at the last meeting, we had considerable discussion around the reality that we are seeing very significant increases in Caltrain ridership, and cities up and down the peninsula are building transit-oriented development in anticipation of more and more riders taking rail. And then we're going to have a significant jump in demand for Caltrain ridership when electrification occurs, and a significant step jump in demand when the subway connection goes from the Caltrain end-of-the-line station in San Francisco to downtown. And all of those add up to huge increases in demand for Caltrain ridership and capacity. And yet, under the agreement with the High-Speed Rail Authority, Caltrain is limited to six trains an hour, including at peak hours, and they're at five now. So there is a fundamental disconnect between a whole bunch of factors driving great demand increases in coming years for Caltrain and the agreement that Caltrain has with the High-Speed Rail Authority for the electrification funding. If, on the one hand, if, if the high-speed rail funding is held up and there is an electrification funding, Caltrain then becomes essentially liberated to use the track capacity as much as they can and wish to, but they lack the funding for the electrification. So there's a real dilemma there, and it hasn't really been getting talked about very much. And I wanted to report back that finally, this had significant discussion at this meeting, and Caltrain's staff was somewhat willing to acknowledge the reality of the problem. And I'll just add that a year and a half ago, our rail committee specifically recommended to Caltrain that they evaluate the potential of increasing capacity by lengthening the platforms of the high-capacity or high-demand stations. And they finally reported back that that's now on their list of things to study. They had committed to us a year and a half ago that they would look at it. They still have not made any determination of what amount of real estate exists there today. So I think these are really critical issues for us going forward, and they've been essentially buried under the rug, and we need to bring them out to the light of day.
Councilmember Niss.
So, Councilmember Burt, I'm so glad you brought that up, because I think you cannot say often enough that Caltrain is not funded. It has no permanent funding, no plan for permanent funding. And given that this is an enormous success, I think that remains troubling. And as you have underscored, electrification goes along with high-speed rail. And it's very disturbing, because there's good news with high-speed rail, and there's bad news for Caltrain with high-speed rail. And I, I'm calling it out, just as you have, because it's so obvious, but I think many people, I'm not aware of it. And looking at the extension of the platforms is something that was talked about the whole time I sat on Caltrain. And they have a constant problem with that because of just what you've mentioned, the real estate, is how, how can you add on to that? So there's some real conundrums in dealing with what is just one of the most major transportation successes on the peninsula. And I hope that in the future, there'll be more discussion about some long-term type of, of funding that can go to the train. As you know, right now, it is, it is simply a somewhat casual agreement between three counties that will each contribute to this. So simply to put that on record. Thank you.
And now we'll move to oral communications. Cyrilie Lavova-Bouchon, to be followed by Wayne Douglas.
It's Cybell, and congratulations on winning the turkey.
Thank you.
So, stop the ban, coalition has been meeting, and we're not going away. That's the first thing I have to say. I don't want to be unpleasant, but unfortunately, it's a very serious issue when the city has not written their ordinance very well. And I was sympathetic to Cubberly neighbors, although, even though, many of their complaints were not really valid or true, because I lived there, walked there all the time, and I did not see that. So basically, it's chasing poor people out of Palo Alto, which many of these homeless people have just fallen on hard times. They really aren't to blame for their situation. And even those who perhaps should take more responsibility still need a place to live. So you may be aware that Atherton has followed suit, and so has Mountain View, although Atherton doesn't have a problem, and it's creating a domino effect. It's creating a civil rights issue. So I would hope that, I'm gonna, I'm not going to say one of my comments, which I wanted to say, I'm going to spare you guys, but you all should spare me, please, and spare the rest of the city the cost of a lawsuit, and revise it and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Douglas.
I guess I'm a cool conspirator with Cybell, because we're both in the Stop the Ban Group. But I'm going to give you good news, okay? When I first spoke to this council, it was back in August, that it was when the vehicle ban was being considered still, and we know what a spectacular success that has been. But I, and at that time, I told you anecdotes about my wife and I finding a place for somebody who had been unhoused. Well, that's old news. That happened a couple of years ago. I have better news. In our neighborhood, we, some excellent neighbors took care of somebody who was unexpectedly deprived of his housing. And it's one of the great success stories I can think of. So I'm going to give you good news. My neighbor named Jim had been living with his aunt for more than 20 years in our neighborhood. It was a mutually agreeable situation, because she had retired, she was a retired nurse. And he hadn't, he wasn't that old, but he could, you know, handle chores and take care of landscape and all that sort of thing. But last April, she died. And he was displaced, because the surviving son and heir wanted to sell the property so he could settle the estate and go back to Colorado where he lives. So hardly, hardly any kind of transition. Neighboring women took him in. They shared a responsibility for giving him a place to stay, like one month at a time, so nobody was given a heavy burden. And one particular woman, extraordinary person, became basically his caseworker. She said to me one time, when I was talking to her about a month ago, she said, my, you know, I can, I can set my own hours, I work for my own business, I have the time, I'm willing to devote my time to this, and I'm stubborn. And believe me, stubbornness was what she needed. He was not without resources. He's a Vietnam vet, who spent his hitch in country, as they used to say, back in the 60s. And he's a, he's got a Purple Heart, and he's got shrapnel in his jaw and in his hip to serve as a souvenir of what that was like. But this woman took on the task of researching all the available facilities that the VA had for him, including their various grades of how much he needed medical care and so forth. Visited a number of facilities. I don't know how she ever kept it straight. I think it was one of these, if it's Tuesday, this must be Yountville, kind of things. And went through a whole bunch of things. But the good news is, starting in April and ending the week before Thanksgiving, they found a place for him in Barstow. Okay? Now, this costs you guys.
So we need to wrap this up.
Yes, it costs you guys nothing. He never surfaced on your list of people who needed housing, and it's all on us, the neighborhood at Ventura. Okay? Costs you zero. And you're welcome.
So thank you very much. Thank you. Shawnee Kleinhouse.
Good evening, Mayor Sharif, city council members. I just thought I would let you know that there is a boring owl at Bixby Park these days. We have been hoping they would come back. There is one there that was born last year at Shoreline Park. So it's something to celebrate. If any of you wants to see it, I'll be happy to take you over there and show you. And so I just thought I'd let you know. And in answer to Councilmember Shepherd's question about Odebon Certified Golf Courses, it's a company that you pay them and they give you a certificate. Odebon is not a trade name, it's not protected. So there are many, many Odebons, and that is just a business. They do have some best practice, but it's not something that would really make a big difference. We have been working with the city and talking to them and trying to make sure that they do the right things. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move to approval of the minutes. If I could have a motion?
Second.
All right. And if we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. And now, on to the consent calendar. We have one speaker on item nine. Mr. Moss, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, Mayor Sharif, and the council members. Well, I'm glad to see that the results of the election got your attention, and you've put PC zoning on hold, and you're taking another close look at developments in Palo Alto. Let me give some comments on the feedback I got, getting signatures on the referendum petition, and talking to people during the campaign. I was surprised at the high level of upset and even disgust among people in Palo Alto with the PC process and the type of developments that have been built. The size, the density, the lack of adequate setback, the impacts on the community, and inconsistency with past developments. I, I wouldn't, I didn't go to people and say, this is terrible. People were telling me, as soon as I knocked on the door, how upset they were. So that's the first point. The second point is that this project was the first time you have ever had almost quadrupling the density in single-family and low-density multifamily housing. And that caught a lot of people's attention, because there is a city policy that the single-family and low-density residential areas will be protected. And this went against it. So what I got out of this was, when the council has made a promise or established a policy, and they don't follow through, people get upset. And I got that from a number of people that I talked to. Last comment I want to make is that it's very unusual for a referendum on a land use issue to win. The last such referendum I can recall was 800 High, almost 20 years ago, and it lost by over 400 votes, whereas, in this case, Measure D was defeated by almost 2,000. Also, there was discussion about whether people really cared and voted. The turnout was 41% for a special election with only one item on the ballot. Countywide, in Santa Clara County. Countywide, in Santa Clara County, the turnout was 27.6%. So, we had a much higher turnout for this special election in Palo Alto than we did countywide, when there were many important issues on ballots and council members being elected. So, people are concerned, people care, and people are worried. And I think you should take that to heart.
Now, if I could have a motion on the consent calendar?
Second.
If we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. And now, we get to item number 10, and we have a staff presentation.
We do.
This mayor would be joined here. Hillary?
You're listening to the Congress. I'll lead off.
I forgot one of these, right? The airport noise. It's important.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, if I might lead off and introduce our staff here tonight, as we embark on what we've been talking about at the staff level, certainly isn't a very important conversation for the council, and I think ultimately, our community. Did want to say that we should acknowledge that we are fortunate. We live in the center of one of the world's premier areas, and it's most important economy. And increasingly, every existing industry, not just hungry startups, feel compelled to plug into Silicon Valley, and Palo Alto is its heart. You know, we have an abundance of riches, or it's been described in other ways in recent conversations in our community at council meetings. At the same time, the impacts of those, the renewed demand and pull of Silicon Valley, a cycle that has shaped our city and region for several generations, has generated significant contemporary challenges and concerns in our community. Not just in our community, in cities around the region. I've been in other meetings recently, where I was talking to staff people around the peninsula, and they were talking about issues and concerns in their community, and repeatedly, I was hearing about traffic and parking, and the challenges of going downtown. And this was not in Palo Alto, this was elsewhere. So, tonight, born out of concerns about how we plan for and manage growth and change, and not only in the context of our city, really, but ultimately, we've got to be thinking about our neighbors and across this region. And these kind of demands and impacts are manifested, of course, as we know, in issues such as traffic or parking, but there are also other concerns. The council has scheduled, you know, this important study session, which, you know, we've sort of somewhat audaciously titled as "The Future of the City," recognizing that a lot of the high-impact areas are concentrated around our key commercial corridors in the city, but ultimately, obviously affecting our entire city. This "Future of the City," in the face of these great challenges, speaking on behalf of the staff, I want to say that we see that this is a great opportunity for our city. And unlike some comments that have been made recently, not too late. And I want to speak on behalf of the staff in this regard, that these concerns about managing change and the influence it has in our city extends to our staff and our ability to manage the demands and workload. This abundance of riches, or maybe better said, the demand for being here, that is placed upon all of us, that has required us to attempt to navigate simultaneously between projects and building or modifying the planning foundation that we need as a city to help guide us, has put us behind too, in ways as a staff. So, I want to say that, you know, we see this initial study session as a very positive opportunity to talk about how to clarify our collective vision, ultimately, as a community, expressed through a renewed comprehensive plan, and other planning tools, through what we think has to be a fully engaged citizen participation effort to truly help inform the council's choices and their decisions. And as a backdrop to our discussion tonight, we'll be interested in talking about how we ultimately make the time and the investments to refine these foundational plans for our city, to chart the right course for the future of our city. So, I think it's a very fortunate time on our staff. Our new planning director, Hillary Gittleman, is here, right on schedule. And as I mentioned to the council, when we selected Ms. Gittleman to join us, her strong background in comprehensive planning, in environmental impact review, I think Abley compliments. Aaron, I saw, was here? Is he? Aaron Ackman, who is our deputy planning director, who I think Abley filled in as interim planning director, also someone we brought on in the past year, who has a strong background in comprehensive planning and advanced planning, obviously to work with Stephen Turner and our staff in advanced planning, to really allow us to support, I think, the process to take a look at our plans and how to set this course for the future. So, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our new planning director. I know, how long have you been here, Hillary? Just a little over a month. Seems like you've been here for at least a year already. Turn it over to Hillary and our staff, and we will try to lay a foundation for your discussion. Now, I do want to let you know, remind the council, you're well aware of this, but the public may not be, that, you know, we did solicit some initial comments and questions from the council to help us sort of broadly shape our staff report. You might feel that we've done that very imperfectly, but it was done intentionally to be sort of broadly stated. We did share the comments and questions we had here from the council as your backdrop, but we really see our job is to set this foundation and turn that conversation back over to you. So, without any further ado, Hillary?
Well, thank you, Jim, and thank you to Stephen. Stephen and his staff helped with a lot of the data collection and preparation on the report that you received prior to this evening's meeting. A good place to start any discussion about planning is the comprehensive plan, and we do that in the staff report. I just wanted to reiterate that it is the city's guiding document when it comes to land use and development decisions. Every individual decision that the council makes, and the planning commission, and others is intended to be consistent with that plan, not in every single one of its policies, but on balance, consistent with that plan, which has served Palo Alto so well. The plan was adopted in 1998, and it's amazing how current its themes are. It's still valid, even though it's somewhat dated, in the sense that it's a plan that was originally envisioned for the years 1998 to 2010, but it continues to guide us, in part because the plan articulates two different development limits that we have not yet reached. So, there's a cap for citywide development, and another cap for downtown development, and neither of those has been reached. So, I would say this is a great plan that was thoughtful when it was originally drafted. The themes remain current, the policies remain current, and the development caps that it put in place have not been reached. But clearly, there have been changes in Palo Alto since 1998, probably a lot of changes. And we tried to articulate in the staff report what some of those are, and some of the concerns that have arisen because of the changes that have happened. We've illustrated some of those changes, again, in slides here this evening, but we can flip through those pretty quickly. They relate to population changes, employment changes, residential development activity. This is an illustration of those downtown and citywide development caps, and our progress towards those caps. And if you look at even just a partial list of the projects that we've been working on here in Palo Alto over the last two years, and some of the planning efforts that have been underway, and some of them completed, you'll see the genesis of some of the concerns we're hearing from the public. There's really, it seems to me, as the newcomer here, a lack of a coherent narrative that connects some of these things together. And interestingly, if you look at the next two years, which is on the next slide, they have the potential to look very much the same as the last two, unless we grab the reins and seize the opportunity that is really the basis of tonight's discussion. Specifically, as we discuss in our staff report to the council, we have an opportunity to combine some of the planning efforts, actually, maybe you could go back to that prior slide, combine some of the planning efforts on the column on the right into the comprehensive plan update, and subject it to the kind of community engagement and environmental review process that we think the community is eager for. At the same time, we have the opportunity, I think, we say this in the staff report as well, to reform the PC process, which has been the lightning rod for a lot of concerns of late. And then, we have the opportunity to continue some of the short-term problem solvings and solutions that the council has already put underway related to traffic and parking. And we think an opportunity to continue processing projects that are consistent with current zoning, but hold them to a very high standard, where we have to acknowledge in our analysis the long-range planning efforts that are going on simultaneously, and present decision-makers with a defensible review of the direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts of the actions that are proposed, using the best available data and tools that we have. So, this slide, which is kind of small in terms of the tech size, is big in terms of ideas. These are the six questions that we put forward in the staff report, one, two, three, four, five, six, yes, six questions that we put forward. Very general, very broad questions. Our hope was that they were sufficiently broad to capture all of the individual comments and suggestions that the council members provided to us to guide this evening's presentation. And what we're hoping to focus on in your discussion of these six questions is the process, and what we will ultimately bring back to you, once we understand council's direction. Next slide. Our thought is, if we can get your thoughts this evening on these six questions, we can try and formulate what we believe your direction to staff is, bring that back to you in the February timeframe, around the time of your retreat. We think that that is specifically going to relate, or we hope that relates, to the comprehensive plan amendment and the EIR process, and bringing that longstanding effort that the planning commission and the staff has been engaged in into the public eye and to conclusion. We hope it will also relate to this reform of the PC zoning, and any other issues that the council chooses to lay on the table this evening as part of those efforts. I think I will leave it there. We've prepared additional slides that groups each of these questions. We thought it made sense to maybe group them, to allow council discussion after public input, so that you could go through them in an orderly fashion. But we're happy to answer questions. Any other thoughts you might have?
Mr. Mayor? If I might say one last thing, thank you for that, Hillary. Obviously, this is a study session, and I think it's intentionally good that it's a study session, in that, at least in my view, we need to make more time for both the council's opportunity to hear from the public, but for you to have your own discussion, without having to feel kind of compelled to make a tactical decision or whatever in the moment, but start to talk about broader strategies. That being said, study sessions do allow us to be able to mine commentary from the council, and I just would say that while we made some recommendations here, it's just our initial first thought, and obviously, as we get to the end of this meeting, we might be able to summarize sort of a little bit what we've heard from you, and it might be slightly different as it relates to schedule or some of those sorts of things. So, we're eager, we're all ears, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now, we'll go to the public. We have a number of speakers. Everyone will have three minutes. So, our first speaker is Harvey Miller, to be followed by Eric Philseth.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Harvey Miller, and I've been a resident of Palo Alto for some years. And talking about the future of the city, we have to put in the context of the future of the nation. As a child, I read, and I was a precocious child, I read books by Louis Mumford, and since then, books by Jane Jacobs, that caused me to become a fan of planned community zoning. And that's why I want to address the opposition that Bob Moss expressed. And it's pretty hard to argue against Bob Moss, pretty hard to argue against that 55% that voted against the senior housing, that I was very much for. But, the real issue is the demographic shift. It isn't the present that we have to look at so much. Yes, 55% is pretty impressive. By 2030, 75 million Americans will be over 65. And I have an article, made copies that are available as far as they'll go, in the Atlantic Monthly of this month, about the next housing crunch. I gave copies to all of you. You know, there are a lot of downsides to single-family housing. It's hard to talk against single-family housing in view of that vote. I'm a minority of one in my own family. But what is the cause of sprawl? It's the, what is the cause of traffic, rather, which we both don't like, Bob? It's sprawl, covering the countryside with houses, covering prime agricultural land, driving up the cost of land because of the low-density usage. It's not the rational way to use land. But, you know, that's not going to win any fans of, I mean, nobody's going to agree with me on that. It's the demographic shift that's going to make the difference. And I really recommend this article, I'll give copies as far as they'll go to anybody who wants one. What happens when people are over 65 with no longer young children, is their preference and their prejudice for single-family housing changes, and that's reflected in demand. There aren't enough apartments, there aren't enough condos, there aren't enough multifamily There aren't enough apartments, there aren't enough condos, there aren't enough multifamily, multi-story buildings. We need more of them, not less. So please, look at the future, don't be responsive to that 55%, because it's going to change. That's my piece.
Eric Philseth, to be followed by Robert Lansfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question I'm going to come back to at the end of this, but first, I think the core issue here is actually very simple, right? There are two conflicting visions for Palo Alto, and pretty much everything else stems from that. Vision A is that we are a medium-density family town, a great place to live, and with great schools to send your kids to. Vision B is more like San Francisco South, basically the financial and professional hub of the peninsula. The idea is that Palo Alto will accommodate regional growth through high-density office and housing construction near public transportation, and with a thriving retail and entertainment sector to support it. That said, vision B also comes inherently with unsolvable traffic and parking problems, pollution, overstretched city infrastructure, and schools. If you want vision B, these things are the price. It is San Francisco South, for better and worse. So we're here tonight nominally talking about dimensions like planned community, parking plans, and so forth. But the real issue is the two visions. The comprehensive plan and the city zoning laws were designed to support vision A. The reason the city now has 25 PC zones and a patchwork of other loopholes and exemptions is that you folks, and the city staff, are trying to implement vision B within a framework of laws that says vision A. It really is that simple. The planning department, the architectural review board, planning transportation committee, certainly the development industry, and most of you folks sitting up there tonight want vision B, whereas most Palo Alto voters want vision A. Certainly not all of us, gentleman preceding me, but a clear majority of us are not willing to accept the costs in terms of density, traffic, congestion, school crowding, and all that other stuff that it would take to reach vision B. Now, I'm sure some of you will say, well, we can have the vision of both, or we can have the best of both. But we can't. You can't add thousands or tens of thousands more people and jobs here without a lot more car trips and parking demand, and we will still be a basic aid school district. Or you may say, we should abandon vision A, it can't be maintained anymore. Of course it can. What it's lacked is not city latitude, but city leadership. So that's the issue. Most of us want vision A, but most of you want vision B. That's B as in build, baby, build. You even say it yourself, you're being bullied by residents into obeying zoning laws. You say you can't read anything into elections, people vote for elections, people vote for all kinds of reasons. Well, the reason is that you're over there, and we're over here. All of which brings me back to my question. Half of you are running for reelection next year. Why? It's a serious question. You don't get paid, you spend all your Monday nights here, you pour over endless minutia about city operations, and you have to sit there and listen to, and have to sit there and listen to all of us, three minutes at a time. Life is short. If you think we're bullies, or if you don't have passion for vision A, why waste your time here? The voting majority of us want leadership that will preserve vision A in the midst of serious regional challenges. If that's not your passion, then for heaven's sake, go find something that is. Thank you.
Robert Lansfield, to be followed by Martin Bernstein.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Robert Lansfield. I live at 189 Walter Hayes Drive. But I'm really here tonight as the owner of one condo in a 12-unit condo project that was built about 30 years ago on High Street between Hawthorne and Everett. And I'm also here as a long-term property owner and manager. My wife and I have lived here 50 years. Forty years ago, I was on the board of directors of the Palo Alto Housing Corp. and the Colorado Park Development. And this has to do with taking the long view and the cumulative impact of a lot of little decisions. And my basic point is that it's tough to take the long view and to decide that enough is too much. As I've said, I've lived here a long time, I was on the Palo Alto Housing Corp. board. Also, my family and I, we've owned a farm up in Oregon 150 years. We know about property management and how the little tiny changes over the time. If you do something, you know, first thing you know, you're out of business or whatever. So there's substantial changes. And I've seen how it's important to, as a property manager, as an owner, to say, okay, we've got to make a course shift. I think everybody on the council has kind of seen that. So what I'm urging is, take the long view, like 20 or 30 years out. That's what we did when we were thinking about building High Street Solar, the condo project. We looked at it 20, 30 years, we said, this is going to be a good deal. So we did it. You can too, in your way. And as for the argument that, well, people that have got their projects in the pipeline, you know, it's not fair to them, partially true, but there's tens of thousands of other people in the city that don't have anything in the pipeline, but they've been waiting to. And so it's kind of not fair to them to say, well, just this one more. So you've got your work cut out for you, welcome to the glorious world of property management. Thank you.
Martin Bernstein, to be followed by Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp and council. I'm Martin Bernstein, speaking as an individual, not as a member of any group or any board. Thank you. We've seen great cities in the world, and a tool that great cities have used are planned communities. 200 years ago in Florence, it was called Planned District. And we've seen, people who've been to Florence or other great cities have seen how great it is when there's flexibility for governments to make changes in urban environments as population increases and as new ideas come up. The history of urban development, as many of us know, two directions cities can take are to stay frozen in time, in other words, whatever rules are in place, keep those rigid and no violation, or no relaxation from them, or possibilities of flexibility to that. Or there's a direction of evolution of cities. And a tool that can be used, then, would be planned community. In Florence, it was called Planned Districts. So there's a danger of planned communities that can happen, where there's a disproportionate fairness or balance of benefit given to a developer, for example, and a benefit derived to the public. So the issue of fairness, I think, is what's key to a successful planned community process. Part of the protection the public has is that it is discretionary, so it's not ministerial. So it does take public debate, and that's when the idea of fairness really will show up in a conversation. The challenge for any government body is, how do we make regulations or laws when the outcome may be, or the discussion is, or the decisions can be subjective, not objective? And that's a big challenge for governments. So as long as everyone is acting in fairness, then I think the public, as long as the public feels they're getting a fair outcome, that the public then can support a planned community. There's one great example, about 65 years ago, Frank Lloyd Wright had a proposal for Foothill College. His idea was, exceed the height limit in Los Altos Hills and make a high-rise Foothill College, and don't tear down any trees. The government in Los Altos says, oh, I'm sorry, that exceeds the height limit, so we do this. So I think it's a great example of, when there's flexibility, there could be a good outcome. Everyone needs to be educated on the policies and benefits. Fairness is the biggest issue. And I think if a community feels, any government body is feeling fair, then it can be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by Ruth Lowey.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp and council members. This is a nice, complex project you've put before yourselves. Good luck. Let me make a few suggestions about things you should be considering. The first thing, which is not mentioned in the staff report, is what we call, in the aerospace business, systems engineering. When a project is proposed, it shouldn't be looked upon as just all by itself. You should look at what is happening, other areas in the city and in other cities, that can impact it, or that it can impact. Take a look at how all of the projects underway or under consideration interact with each other. That's critical. Second, I'm glad to see the staff is talking about transparency. That reminded me of the 27 University Project, which supposedly was discussed behind closed doors for almost a year, before the public, or officially the council, was even informed it was underway. And that's not transparent. Third, there is, when a project is proposed, and the staff comes in with a report, and the city manager has said, this is the way they do things, the comprehensive plan policies and programs that support the recommendation of the staff are all cited. The ones that don't are ignored. In the past, both the pros and the cons were cited. That doesn't mean that you automatically go with this way or that way, but it does give everybody an opportunity to look at the entire picture, not just a biased picture. Then there's everybody's favorite type of development, the PC project. Now, I've been circulating the survey form that I passed out tonight, so you can see the kind of questions I've been asking. And I mulled this over for a couple of weeks, and I wasn't too sure that the survey was correct. And then I saw the letter from Wyndham Yellenbach saying that it was terrible, so I know that I hit it right on the nail. I've gotten less than 50 responses back, this has only been out for a few days. And so I'm not going to give you the quantities of how people are voting on this or that, but one thing I can tell you is, the people who have responded overwhelmingly say, kill PC zoning, option A is the one we want. Actually, that wasn't what I was preferring, that's not my, that was not my personal first choice, but I put it out there. And what this tells me, and what I'll be telling you, is that people do not feel that they can trust the city council to undertake a PC revision process, which will put limits on development in the future, and adhere to them. That's what some of the people have said in their comments. So be aware and be concerned.
Ruth Lowey, to be followed by Dick Rosenbaum.
The city has not been paying sufficient attention to residents' complaints about traffic congestion and parking, and tonight I wanted to address traffic. So the city installed a new traffic, or some traffic lights at the entrance of the Town and Country Village that has caused long backups on Embarcadero and El Camino. The Pali High School on-demand crossing signals just to the east of El Camino, and every time the students want to cross, cars have to stop and wait for the red light. Well, I know it's safe for the students, however, the lights are not synchronized, and there's three of them in close succession. So it would really be nice if those could get synchronized. Frustrated drivers on El Camino run red lights, trying to turn onto Embarcadero, and thus blocking the intersection. And those wanting to go straight ahead sometimes have to wait for several lights to be able to go forward. Another problem exists on El Camino and Page Mill, where there is no right-turn lane for the El Camino traffic going north. Therefore, drivers cut through the neighborhood in order to avoid that particular area impacting the neighborhood. According to a member of the Citizens Advisory Group at the time of the redevelopment of that corner on Page Mill, there were, quote, "There were plans to have a right-turn lane at the location, but it was waiting for the buildings to be developed so that additional space could be acquired for the right-turn lane." But when the old pro-property was redeveloped, the reserving of that lane space quietly disappeared. The city staff review of the site used old citywide traffic studies that said that it wasn't needed, ignoring a newer traffic study that targeted El Camino. And unfortunately, this sounds very familiar, about using an old traffic study instead of a new one. The planning director, Curtis Williams, at the time in September 2009, said that the right-turn lane was not effectuated when those projects were processed, as transitions in transportation staff at the time resulted in the oversight. Now, the Charleston-Arastradero Road Diet was declared a success, yet traffic congestion has been moved into the Maybell area by about 24%. And our chief transportation official admitted a speed survey had not been done along the cut-through routes. In fact, the chief transportation official seemed to be spending more time planning for new projects and grants, rather than fixing some of the known projects. So I hope that that situation will change. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Rosenbaum, to be followed by Nielsen Buchanan.
Good evening, council members. I'm Dick Rosenbaum, and I'll be very brief. A discussion about the future of the city is always appropriate, but you are ignoring the two elephants in the room, the Stanford-Ariaga and J. Paul Projects. I was quite astonished to find out in September of last year that I now had a council, a majority of whose members were enthusiastic supporters of these oversized projects, and furthermore, that the city manager was the head cheerleader. It was the presence of these projects in the pipeline that made the Maybell referendum a subject of citywide interest. The results sent a message to the council. You are not going to demonstrate that you have received the message until you direct staff to notify the two applicants that the development climate has changed from what it was when they were encouraged to submit their applications, and they are no longer likely to be approved. Until you take that action, you're just spinning your wheels. Thank you.
Thank you. Nielsen Buchanan, to be followed by Richard Brandt.
I want to thank the council for trying to rise above the, all the opinions that have been evolving over the last year. I thought carefully about what would the single issue I would bring up at this opportunity that would shed some light and direction that you're going to have to choose. And I retrace my saga of looking at my street and wondering what the parking situation was. That swamp led me to talking to Professordville, University South, and all of a sudden, I find myself working with people over in Crescent Park, and have been lured into the second swamp of the commercial core of California Avenue. All the puzzlement is what's happening to our neighborhoods and the onslaught of commuter cars that are parking on our residential streets. A few commuter cars is not a problem, a lot of commuter cars really is. So what's the core issue? And what I'd ask, as you think through all the things you could initiate tonight, is to initiate an effort with city staff, the neighborhoods around those two commercial cores, University Avenue and California Avenue, and help us understand the mathematics of the permission for development rights to be granted that are related to the parking assessment districts. My theory is that the original assumptions for the parking assessment districts assume there would be parking provided by those initial projects. And my conclusion is, we're out of space, yet projects are continuing to be approved by staff with no negative impact. It's not enough time tonight to go into that. I hope to be short, so we can get into the essence of your meeting. But if it's any way you can convene a group of staff and the residents on those two commercial cores, help us understand, yes, I understand the case law that was so carefully outlined in page 25, where the entitlement rights of property owners. But at the same time, you're defying the law of physics. You're approving projects that have no space available. So the theories of the parking assessment districts are worn out. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Brandt, to be followed by David Kleiman.
Good evening, members of the council, staff. I appreciate the time, thank you for scheduling the session. I would recommend, and with all due respect to Mr. Gittleman, I know you're here new, but I would say the title of this really should be "The Future of Our City," because we're talking about not a city, but our city, and I think that's important to... we're talking about not a city, but our city, and I think that's important to consider. So I understand that's, that's kind of a net. I've, I've lived here on and off since 1955, homeowner since 1977, so have some experience and knowledge of what's going on. I live at 281 Addison, so I'm in Professordville. And just along that line, one of my neighbors who, her husband invented the flu mist, so they did very well, and moved out of the house on Addison and Ramona. But I saw her a week ago, and they moved in 2000, and she said, "I can't believe how bad the parking situation has become in the old neighborhood." And as I drive around, and Nielsen and I have done some parking surveys, it gets a lot better, and some of you don't understand how bad it is in our neighborhood, because your area, south of Oregon and whatever, doesn't have this problem. Just today, I had a contractor come in, and they said, "Where do we park?" And so they park, double park in the middle of our Bryant Bicycle Boulevard. Well, we know the Bicycle Boulevard is, you know, for bicycles, and we encourage that. It's part of what we said. And yet, double parking is a, is a safety hazard. So, you know, we've got a parking problem to go through. What I would like to say, though, is, and my point, I think, from 30,000 feet, is we have a very viable comprehensive plan. And so, on your second slide, you talk about the comprehensive plan and meeting residential and commercial needs, but the plan says it a little bit differently. It says, "Meet commercial needs, but not at the expense of residential quality of life." Now, go look at that. You'll see that, because that's an important statement, and I think those of us who live here in Palo Alto, live here because we love the quality of life. And I think that's an important thing to look at as we look the future of our city. So I think I want to finish up by saying, oh, yeah. So I'm 68, so the first speaker said everybody wants a high-rise because they're over 65. I love my single-family home. I don't love the parking situation, but I love it, and I know a lot of people in my neighborhood do. And so we encourage and will work closely, as Nielsen says, to help you resolve this problem. Development, yes, but not without commensurate parking and traffic, traffic solutions. Infrastructure's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. David Kleiman, to be followed by Ken Hayes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I want to address just one item that Director Gittleman, who is apparently an extremely brave person to jump into this, this job, one of the six, I believe it was six points, which is, "How should we ensure transparency, consistency, and predictability for development applications that conform with current zoning?" I'm perhaps in the unenviable position of having a current development application that has been approved, appealed, that conforms with current zoning. It's, it's fully parked. But it's taken me 20 months to get to the point where, in a couple of weeks, I'll stand before you and cross my fingers and hopefully achieve a good result. But I, I think that it's, it's my position as a developer, I've done this for a long time, primarily in Chicago, although for years here now. I think that we do want to encourage responsible development. I think that these projects should be parked. You've gotten a message over the last year, which I believe you've heard loud and clear from the neighbors. I tend to agree with a good bit of the message, and I've, I've been working with Nielsen and others to try to help solve the parking issue. But I think if you receive development applications that are, that are fully parked, you should provide developers with a level of transparency and consistency that they receive in other communities. If you don't, people like me are, are going to go elsewhere. If you want to send us there, then I guess, you know, give us a clear message, and we'll head, you know, north to Redwood City or south to Mountain View. But I don't think that's the message. I don't think that the majority of Palo Altons, notwithstanding this apparent, you know, earth-shattering referendum, really do want to limit development. I think people want responsible development, and I think if you receive applications that are responsible and parked, they should proceed in a much more, much less resistant fashion than the ones that I've, you know, preferred to the city. So I thank you for your time and wish you a good evening.
Thank you. Ken Hayes, to be followed by Randy Pop.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, members of the, of the council. Hope you had a nice Thanksgiving. I'm here this evening to discuss the need for the PC zone, as well as a PC project at 2755 El Camino that's been thrown into the PC debate. Although a community zoning ordinance addresses land use and development regulations for each parcel of land within the city, the PC or PD zoning district allows for other opportunities not necessarily envisioned by the zoning ordinance creators. The PC zone provides flexibility, as we all know, but that flexibility should be in accordance with the objectives and the spirit of the comprehensive plan, general plan, by allowing modifications in regulations such as building relationships, setbacks, height limitations, floor area ratio, landscaping, open space, and how you measure open space. The PC zone encourages creative projects that incorporate design features that, and greater amenities and public benefits that would likely result, or not, that would likely result from conventionally planned development. The creators of a zoning ordinance realize this flexibility is important for a community's ever-changing demands, which is why nearly every community has some, some version of it. Cities like San Jose, Santa Clara, Saratoga, Sunnyvale, Los Gatos, Redwood City, San Carlos, Belmont, and San Mateo, I checked them all today, have either a PC, planned community, or planned development zone to provide for flexibility within the framework of the zoning ordinance. The promise of the PC is a better, higher-quality project, when weighed against what might have been achieved without the PC zone. The goals of the PC zone should be better understood by everyone involved, and the process should be more engaging of the community, because you have to ensure that the promise becomes a reality. The 2755 El Camino Real project is a small project, only 31,000 square feet. It's only 12,000 square feet larger than what would be permitted under the CS zone. It's going to be a beautiful project that anchors the corner of Page Mill Road and El Camino Real, and it provides more than $3 million in public benefit. When compared to other PC projects under consideration that individually have an area greater than all PCs probably built in the last 20 years in Palo Alto, 2755 is in a different category. Going forward, don't throw out the PC zone. I believe you need to create a different PC, different PC zone categories that consider the size, like 395 Page Mill or 27 University, or overly complex projects like Edgewood Plaza and X Juice, or Alma Plaza and X Juice, and differentiate them from smaller projects like 2755 El Camino, where the land use is consistent with surrounding land uses and the modest, the floor area bonus is fairly modest. But all of them, whether large, small, complex, should fulfill the promise of this special zoning district, a better, higher-quality project than would likely result from conventionally planned development. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Pop, to be followed by Michael Elcheck.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for this discussion tonight. I'm Randy Pop. I live at 375 Monroe Drive, and I'm here as a resident tonight, not a member of a commissioner board. I've lived here in this immediate area for 42 years, and I've been a participant in the growth and the change and the improvement and the challenges the city has seen. I see Palo Alto as a city on the most forward edge in regard to innovation, education, and creativity. I love how vibrant the downtown is and the other nodes have become. And while we're experiencing some growth pains, we are better for it. The future of this city needs to reflect the abilities that its residents have. Guidelines and regulations we have in place are thoughtful and forward-thinking. They're not perfect, but they're well-drafted. I'm concerned. Allowing projects to be stopped midstream creates an environment and an expectation of unmanageable risk. We need to be fluid and responsive. While we may have discussion about what improvement is, causing it to stop would be tragic. Really wonderful cities don't cease to evolve. They continually adapt to population, demand, and opportunity. This needs to happen in a fair and predictable way, within the established framework. Make quick changes where obvious benefit is clear, such as what we're having happen right now with parking. Make thoughtful and paced change where the answers are not immediately evident. Seek advice and guidance from trained experts, and tap into the seemingly limitless capabilities present in this community. We are a vibrant community, and involving all of our residents in a community process is an important and really necessary part of moving us forward. But I urge you not to ignore the rules that we have in place, the guidelines that were so thoughtfully created, and stop projects that are approved and are midstream now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Elcheck, to be followed by Susan Feinberg.
Good evening, council members. I am here tonight not as a planning commissioner, but I want to make a point about this process and about the planning commission and about the city council, which is to say that you're a council of nine, and we're a commission of seven. And the reason why that's the case is because the diversity of opinion on subjects as important in this, as this are really crucial. I don't think that hearing the same voice over and over, or being unanimous on a lot of these topics, helps us. It, it would be far more beneficial if we heard from a diverse group of perspectives on these issues. And I'm here tonight as a member of the smallest constituency you have. I think sometimes I was appointed to the commission because you wanted to demonstrate that you didn't have to be over 45 to be on the planning commission. As a 32-year-old, I think I might be a member of a group of very few people who own their properties in Palo Alto. I'm also a member of another really small group in Palo Alto, which is to say the next generation. I'm here in support of sustainable communities, smart growth, and what I'd like to refer to as density done well. Our last mayor, Mayor Ye, sort of had an emphasis on community building. And as planners, because each of you are in that role all the time, as city planners, you know that creating community, creating spaces that support community building, is not just about hosting a ping-pong tournament, it's about how you design a specific community, whether it encourages the sort of interactions between retail and commercial uses and housing, whether people can walk to the things they need to get to, or whether they need to get into a car and drive 10 or 15 miles. The population of residents over 55 and over 65 and over 75 is going to balloon. If you were smart politically, you would not listen to me, because the population of 30 to 54-year-olds is going to shrink dramatically, because there is no housing in the city that is affordable. I don't think that the individuals who are over 55 and over 65 and over 75 always necessarily vote for what they really want. I think that they vote against change a lot, because it's scary, but I don't know if they always make the same decisions in their private life that they're making on the ballot.
Thank you. Susan Feinberg, to be followed by Chris Donnelly.
Mayor Scharf, council members, good evening. You have not been listening to the citizens of Palo Alto for years, as we have spoken to you and staff about our vision for what Palo Alto should look like now and in 10 or 20 years. You have kicked some of us out of City Hall and surrounded yourselves with yes-men and sycophants. You have structured a planning process with predetermined outcomes that find no significant impacts. The population of Palo Alto has grown 12 percent in the last decade. That's more than in the prior 30 years. Yet the findings for projects are always no impact, no traffic impact, no parking shortage or intrusions into nearby neighborhoods, no new school construction, despite the construction projects at all 17 school sites, no infrastructure shortages, not one cumulative impact, and on and on. Please begin a series of reforms that fix the mess that you have created, so that the citizens of Palo Alto are not forced to appeal, sue, and place future matters repeatedly on the ballot. The citizens of Palo Alto should not be collateral damage in a fight for power and money. This should be accomplished swiftly, with, one, an immediate moratorium on all major projects in all zoning designations, not just PCs. Do not allow this to linger, as the projects in the pipeline will cause harm and compound already existing problems. Two, bring the comprehensive plan update out into the light of day, where the public can participate in the process in a meaningful manner before it is all set in stone. Three, reform the project review process and approval process to restore the public's faith in the integrity of the process and council's decisions. Four, restructure the PC zoning regulations, so that it is only for the most extraordinary projects with public benefit first and foremost. And finally, five, restore consistency and predictability for development applications that conform with current zoning by applying the zoning regulations without discretionary exceptions that have become the norm, rather than the exception. You must begin to represent all of us, not just a powerful entrenched minority. You must work to restore our trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Donnelly, to be followed by Paul Machado.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for starting this process. I think it's very important, and I'm very heartened to see everyone take a step back and take a look at what's going on. And I tried to do that today as well, take a step back and try to understand why is the system broken? Why is the process broken? And I, it occurred to me that perhaps the process isn't broken, but in fact, perhaps the, the process is, is just running amok. So in other words, instead of seeing malice behind all of the things that are going wrong, I more charitably see ineptitude. But perhaps there's a solution. The process there, including all the hearings before the PTC, the ARB, this council, staff, really should be a tool that allows all of the pertinent information to the rise to the top, so that you, as a decision-making body, and those other bodies, can apply judgment and critical thinking, and choosing the correct avenues to go. But what seems to have occurred over, I'm not sure how many years, is that the process has essentially become the decision-maker. And all of the humans seem to stand around shrugging and saying, "Oh, well, the process says that we should do this, so I guess we've got to do it." I don't, there doesn't seem to be much judgment, and I think that's what's really enraging the populace, is because we have elected you to be there and provide critical thinking and creative problem-solving for us, but we don't seem to see that happen. Let me just give a brief example. Recently, a project was up for vote here a couple of weeks ago. I thought it was a bad project, a lot of problems that were not being mitigated, were being swept under the rug, and I sent an email stating that. You approved the project, which is not a surprise, but I was sort of amazed to get an email the following day from a person on the council, essentially saying, "Well, it wasn't a rezoning, so we had to approve it." So this just sort of illustrated this issue, is like, the process, you know, the boxes were checked, so we must approve. And it's, I'm not trying to, to call out anyone, because I've heard the same sort of philosophy come not only from this body, but from the PTC, from the ARB, and from the staff. It seems to be really an endemic problem, where critical thinking, judgment, does not seem to be applied to the process. If the mindset could be changed, and perhaps this could be Hillary and Aaron's next task, if the mindset could be changed throughout city, the process actually, could actually do a good job. We have wonderful comprehensive plans, they're being ignored. Everything is being looked at in a piecemeal, reactive, ad hoc manner, in no sort of cumulative cohesive way. This is why we're getting all of these bad decisions. So those, those... So those are my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Machado to be followed by Herb Borak.
Hi, my name is Paul Machado. I'm a native Palo Alton. Until this year, I didn't know what a comprehensive plan was. I was shocked to find out that it was included, that you're supposed to protect the neighborhoods. I didn't know what a concept plan was. I did know, in my opinion, that there were some pretty ugly, and I thought, kind of massive buildings, Mickey's, Eight-O-One Alma. I was aware the traffic's getting worse. I was aware there was parking problems in the neighborhoods that were getting worse. I started coming to City Hall instead of going to the gym where I was supposed to go, and I heard about housing mandates from the city and developers' rights. I started feeling like an air hockey puck. And when you're a senior, which I am, you play air hockey, unless you can find a senior older than you, you're going to lose. So if you're going to have a comprehensive plan or a concept plan, but you're going to have this huge exception, like a PC, then I don't understand why you have the other plans, because there's always room for an exception. I just don't understand it. And there was a gentleman earlier that says you have a PC because you build better projects. Well, the way I feel is that if you're going to build a project in Palo Alto, my hometown, it should be the best. All of them should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borak to be followed by Fred Baylen.
Mayor Scharf and council members, first I would ask you to direct staff to give you some more information. You had received two questions and answers on green paper that fails to identify the council members who asked each of the questions, which has been standard practice in the past. The council, the public, and the press are entitled to know who asked each of these questions that staff has answered, and so you should direct staff to give you an amended version of these questions and answers for both of these. Also, in regard to new information, you have some information in the staff report on the nineteen eighty-nine land use and transportation study of the total development potential and the amount of non-residential square footage that has been built to date. That study, you know, was from the nineteen eighties. Nineteen eighty-six was the downtown study, nineteen eighty-nine was the land use and transportation study, and there was a separate development potential for each of nine areas. And when the Planning Commission recommended the comprehensive plan for nineteen ninety-eight, those development potentials were included for each of the nine areas. But my recollection is that it was Mayor Rosenbaum suggested that that be amended, so that it be just a total for the entire city. I think you should ask staff to bring you the totals that have been developed so far and the development potential for each of those nine areas from the nineteen eighty-nine land use and transportation study, to see, you know, whether we reach them or are far away for each of those nine geographical areas. You have a letter from Winter Dellenblock that asks at the end if PC zoning has ended, that we should protect the ability to efficiently develop all affordable housing projects, you know, one hundred percent affordable housing. Well, we can do that with the implementation of the state housing density bonus law. You don't need PC zones to do that. You needed a PC zone at Maybell for the small market rate units. You didn't need it for grocery stores in neighborhood commercial land uses, such as College Terrace Center. You needed it for office development there, or for housing at Edgewood, where there were CCNRs that prohibited housing. In terms of letters, you have one from Mr. Allsman. Unfortunately, he has the wrong agenda item on it. It says number two, but it's really this agenda item, number ten. He's a professional planner. He's very well summarized the issues. Finally, in regard to these two large projects that with great fanfare, we heard that the mayor and the city manager removed from your agenda, the Ariaga Project and the Jay Paul Project. Mr. Ariaga has made it very clear to you that he doesn't want to participate in the public process. He wants you to approve his development without an application, so he shouldn't have been on the agenda in the first place. And Jay Paul's development is part of an application that's in process now, so it would be a violation of the California Environmental Quality Act and the zoning code for the council to discuss that project at this time until you receive your recommendations from the ARB and the Planning and Transportation Commission. And Mr. Ariaga can go across the street to Stanford and develop his project, and just as the use permit was recently amended, without the council even being hearing from staff, that there was an amendment forward, I'm sure if Mr. Ariaga developed a project across the street, you wouldn't hear from staff either. Thank you.
Fred Baylen to be followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse.
Page two, and as the director said, each time a project or rezone is considered, that decision is required to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Were it but so, the comp plan is law, the zoning code is law, and it stems from the comp plan. Consistency is a perfectly logical requirement, and is required by law in eighty-five percent of California cities. But we are a charter city and are not legally bound to comply. And so the city attorney described the potential impact of the second Maybell petition, intended to roll back the council's comp plan change as non-determinative. It did not matter. Here, individual projects recast the comp plan, not vice versa. About Alma Village, much has been said about the loss of setbacks from the required thirty feet to nil, poor circulation, closely packed housing, and AWOL public benefits. But it all stems from a larger decision to set aside the Alma Plaza comp plan designation as one of four neighborhood centers. At the J.J.N.F. block in El Camino, another highly manipulated PC engagement, neighborhood commercial is replaced and dominated by excessive Class A office space. And some of what is before us now blows the mind. Palo Alto has always had a strong strain of resistance to planning. In the sixties, the city refused to adopt general plan, the general plan in spite of state law, for fear that they might have to follow it. Up until the successful efforts of Enid Pearson, other residents, and a young environmental attorney named Pete McCloskey. But since its court-mandated completion and its comp plan successors, the city has used its status as a charter city to work around them. The current comp plan is a good document and the result of a wide community engagement, but it is not respected. That's why I believe we have to look at cities like Irvine, who have passed charter amendments to acquire consistency with the comp plan. If PCs are retained in the code, such a stipulation would logically apply to PCs as well, but to be sure, it should also be explicitly stated in the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawnee Kleinhouse to be followed by Greg Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, city council members. I'm Shawnee Kleinhouse. I'm a resident of Palo Alto, and I'm the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. In that role, I visit a lot of cities, and I see how they do their planning process from general plans to PC to SEQA documents and everything in between. And what I think, if I go back to what the city manager said, is that we have abundance of riches. And what Palo Alto has, that all the other cities do not really have very much of, is nature. And what we have is more, and every city at this time struggles with parking, struggles with traffic, struggles with growth, all of these things are happening all around Silicon Valley. But we have something that all the rest of them do not have, and protecting that, as we look into the future, to us at Odebon is extremely important. What we see that cities do, and Palo Alto included, is to provide more access to nature, because the population is growing, everybody needs opportunities for recreation, and so we provide more access. But we have to support that by more space and more nature, and what we see is little chipping here and there, ten acres here, ten acres there. Let's see how we can convert some of that open space, our biggest treasure, into something else. There is huge pressure on tiny little parcels in cities all over this area, and we should be very careful at converting any of ours to anything else. And part of what we were told, at least at Odebon, when people came in to buy seeds, and they would tell me, "What are you doing about Mezurdi?" And I said, "We're not engaged in that." They told us, "Do you know that hawk that lives there? It's the last orchard in Palo Alto, so I'm going to vote that down, because the hawk may stay there for two more years. That's worth it." And this is something that take to heart. People really value their little open spaces, even within the city, the parks, everything we have, so be careful at how we deal with that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Greg Goodwin to be followed by Adina Levine.
The points I want to make are short and sweet to some extent. I want to say simply this, the impact. I heard a gentleman earlier speak of a comparison between Palo Alto and San Francisco, and I want to say I had the privilege of being in San Francisco on Embarcadero Road during peak traffic, and it took me two hours, thirteen minutes, and fifty-one seconds to travel one and nine tenths of a mile. There's other times when I visited San Francisco to visit my grandmother and relatives, and I'd have to drive around and drive around for nearly an hour to find parking. I never knew my vocabulary could be so vulgar in the search for parking. Ended up parking like a half a mile away from where grandmother lives. Basically, this city, there's a reason why it's probably one of the best-managed cities around. But we also have to be aware of the decisions, and rapacious decisions can destroy the quality of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina Levine to be followed by Dan Garber. Levin.
Good evening, council members. Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain, which is a nonprofit group with about over three thousand people on the Caltrain corridor, including about four hundred in Palo Alto. And the topic on the set of items to consider tonight that I'm going to talk about is about some of the public dialogue topics and about having the public dialogue, including people, some of whom are not here in this room. Some of the things that I'm going to say are going to recap some things that you heard from Elaine Wong, who wrote in a note. She's not here because she has an infant. Palo Alto has fantastic schools with a, you know, fair number of young working parents who are largely not here, and there is some ways that some other cities are using electronic technology to expand that public dialogue, to include those people who are not in the room. The city of San Mateo has been doing a great job of using MindMixer for topics like downtown parking, sustainable streets, playgrounds, and what they found when they did this was that sixty percent of their respondents were between the ages of thirty-five and forty-two. And that was a very different demographic than the people who were coming to the meeting, you know, largely older and retired people at the time to do it, and they were getting a different perspective by having a complimentary process to get that online feedback. And that's important, because there is plenty of data showing some long-term demographic shifts, where baby boomers are somewhat different from Gen Xers, which is my age, and different again from the millennials thirty-five and under, who are driving less, biking more. If they're not participating in the conversation, you're, you know, that should be included to get a full picture. And then lastly, in the decisions queued up for the next couple of weeks on the transportation issues, in terms of the process, a big bang planning process, I think, won't work. This, a data-driven process where there are many initiatives on the table, get a comprehensive picture, and then look at the items iteratively, look at the data, survey, test, iterate, repeat, improve. That's what Stanford does with its TDM program. That's what Google does. That's what Facebook does. So having a data-driven iterative process where you look at, review, see if it works, and, you know, get public feedback on the way is something that can help move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Garber to be followed by Arthur Keller.
Dan Garber, resident of Palo Alto. My comments, I have three thoughts that are related more to the near term, midterm than they are the future. Number one, don't chase markets. Forward the city's future. Cities don't get better in economic downturns, they get better in upturns. Your charge shouldn't be to stop or slow things down. It should be in finding ways to take advantage of the growth to forward the city's interests. Resist stopping things unless it's for an extremely short and very discreet amount of time to figure out what it is you want. Resist slowing things down, because when the upturn ends, so will the city's greater opportunity to leverage its future. Each of the projects in the city's pipeline is an opportunity to work with the applicants to move the city closer to its own goals. What the city should be doing is what it should be doing regardless of the marketplace, thoughtfully, thoroughly, and publicly reviewing and actioning each application. Number two, stop focusing on projects, push early public planning. No amount of code writing or other legislation will have the same degree of impact as getting the city involved earlier in the applicant's design process. Right now, to have even the most preliminary of conversations regarding a proposal's design in a public forum forces the applicant way down the design path. The proposal is already a project. Before they will comment or take action, the city's commissions and boards require a proposal to be presented as a completed project. Its design is done. Right now, it is rare that any real public discussion of the proposal's underlying planning constraints that structure its design solution occurs. The threshold and the risk of discussing a project in public has to be lowered. This is not a small task and requires significant work on the way that applicants, council, commission boards, and the public would participate in meetings of this sort. Three, stop focusing on FAR, manage parking instead. Any applicant of a commercial proposal, planner, or architect will tell you that it is the amount of parking that will usually control the size of a project. Maxing out the FAR of a parcel is rarely achieved. We all know that fully parked projects under existing code will not meet the existing demand for parking in the current environment. Creating incentives to meet current parking demand is potentially a far more effective way to manage a project's size and impact.
Arthur Keller to be followed by Davina Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm going to give my own personal views on some of the issues here as it relates to some of the planning considerations. Firstly, when the last housing element was done, it was done so late in the planning cycle, so that there was essentially no time for the development to happen, for there to be any meaningful EIR. And therefore, in the housing element, if there's an EIR in that, that might be bound in with the EIR for the comp plan and done at the same time, and it would be good for the comp plan to be getting to the city council as soon as practical. I do note that of the comp plan elements that we reviewed on the Planning Commission, only the transportation element, which was done most recently, is the one that received most public input. All the other elements, which were completed some while ago, I'm not sure why they haven't gotten to the city council, were done without the public being as aroused as it is today. And so that, I have some concerns about that process, to make sure that we get proper input into those while we forward them on. One of the things that happens is we tend to be very reactive. In two thousand and six, we were reactive to a bunch of commercial lands being converted into housing and create a moratorium on doing that through the conditional use permit. Now there's an arousal in terms of a lot of things going on, that we had the parking downtown and surrounding, in the downtown surrounding neighborhoods, as a situation that caused a lot of ferment. And I think we need to think a little bit more proactively and consider how policies that were put into effect in the past, for conditions that occurred in the past and are no longer applicable to the current conditions, how those policies should change. So for example, the policy of two hundred and fifty square feet per parking space or per occupant is no longer as effective today as it was. is no longer as effective today as it was before. That's one of the things that is not on our radar, should be. It actually isn't a transportation element to consider, draft, to consider that. So I think that we should think carefully about the reasons for the policies, understand what policies should change, and think about new opportunities. Instead of downtown cap being raised to use it up, think about what other cities have done in terms of allocating air rights. And then you allocate all the air rights out at that time. And then what happens is when people want to develop, they have to buy air rights from somewhere. That's a natural cap as opposed to a race to use up whatever cap is available. So I think we have to think about creative solutions on how we do that, and think about policies that are no longer applicable. Thank you.
Thank you. Davina Brown, to be followed by, oh, Norm Beamer.
Good evening. I live in Palo Alto. I've lived here for over almost fifty years. I believe that the council has not abided by our comprehensive plan. I feel that, and most of my friends and neighbors feel the same way, we don't want to live in San Francisco South. We don't want it to be developed commercially ad infinitum. All we've gotten out of it is more traffic, more congestion, more pollution, and so far, I haven't seen any benefits. The PC projects in my neighborhood, and there are three of them, are all housing projects. I live in South Palo Alto. The parking spills out into the neighborhood streets. It doesn't stay in the projects. The benefits there are a lot more families. We have a lot of young families moving into our neighborhoods. We're not all seniors like me. I think that I want to live in a residential community, not an industrial community. Most of my friends and neighbors feel the same way, and we would like you to stop giving exceptions to our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Beamer, to be followed by Joe Hirsch.
I think other people have said most of what I would want to say, but the one suggestion I have is, or observation, is that this city really doesn't need more office space. We have a lot of office space. I'm sure there's developers and potential tenants who would love to have a lot more office space, but as a city, as residents in the city, we don't need any more office space. So the Ariaga and J. Paul projects should just be set aside, and any PC project that whose impact is to create a bunch of more offices, a bunch more traffic, a bunch more problems for parking, should just be halted. And it's as simple as that. I don't think you should do away with PC zoning, but I think you should just call a halt to the almost frantic efforts to build more office space in Palo Alto. Once the economy cools down a bit, that pressure will go away, and it'll be less of a problem. But for now at least, there should be a moratorium on new office space.
Joe Hirsch, to be followed by David Jiang.
Good evening. First of all, I agree fully with the comments of Eric, excuse me, Phil Seth, Dick Rosenberg, Susan Feinberg, and Fred Baylen. I think they were very cogent. Next, some random thoughts. The lessons of Measure D were both Maybell-related and citywide-related. Voters sent a very clear message that Palo Altons don't like what is routinely being approved by City Hall in all of its various bodies. I suggest that you read, and city staff read, the Palo Alto online comments. They should be very informative, as many are extremely critical of City Hall. They should give you a better understanding of what residents all over town are objecting to. As the gentleman before, we ask for a complete moratorium on all new higher-density developments until a new comprehensive and trustworthy land use and transportation study can be completed, so we understand what level of development can be absorbed or tolerated in the future. This means all developments, all higher-density developments, including PC rezones and RM30 and RM40 upzones. We ask that you revise the density bonus ordinance in process so that the city is in complete control, not developers who make requests for the sun and the moon and then negotiate for all of the concessions that City Hall has been too eager to grant. Understand that the comprehensive plan has something in it for everyone. Staff should be directed to list those comp plan policies and programs that a project supports, as well as those that it violates. Neutrality or professional objectivity would be very welcome here. Finally, we want a true two-way dialogue about what is important. Frankly, not the three-minute, one-way variety such as tonight that has failed us too often in the past and is a major source of frustration for residents who speak, as people have spoken tonight, but later realize that you then do what you always wanted to do before they spoke. One result of that practice was the referendum on Measure D, and people are still frustrated about council not listening one month later. See the Palo Alto online comments to attest to that. We sorely need a better public input process. Thank you.
Thank you. David Jiang, to be followed by David Adams.
David Jiang, Mayor Scharf, council. Been a resident here for fifty-five years, and the last century, I participated in two of the revisions of the comprehensive plan, where the council goes out to the citizens and asks them for their opinions, how they'd like the future of the city to be. And after all the different neighborhoods and people are heard from, you get a comprehensive plan that's put in place. But we no sooner get the comprehensive plan in place than somebody comes along with their PC plan, and you say, "Well, the hell with what the people want. We're going to do this," and just throw out all the citizens' efforts. So I participated in two of them, but I didn't bother going to any future ones, and it wouldn't make any difference, because you're going to do whatever the developer says to do. I feel that you somehow feel that every slant speculator deserves to get a profit. And I think one of the worst abuses of this PC process is that alma village kind of thing. That's just horrible in every way, and there's absolutely no benefit from that.
Thank you. David Adams, to be followed by Eric Rosenblum.
David Adams, Olive Avenue. I attended the council meeting where you approved the Maybell referendum, and I have to say that you all came across as a little bit out of touch with the residents. Even Councilor Klein made the statement that the planning department is impartial. Well, I've been following the J. Paul project because I live in that neighborhood, and the staff reports are basically, you know, they come across as if they've been written by the applicant, anything but impartial. And I've been struggling to figure out how anyone who follows events and reads staff reports can come to such a conclusion. There's almost unanimous residential opposition to that project, and yet several months ago, several of you put it in the fast lane to speed it through the process. So how do you think the residents who are affected by that project feel when you make such a unilateral decision like that? So I have two suggestions. One is to scrap the PC zoning and the 395 Pageant project and 27 University project with it. And secondly, to direct staff to be more transparent and impartial. And maybe the new regime at the planning department could, you know, start off on a new footing by publishing the transportation study that's being withheld because it's not favorable to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Rosenblum, to be followed by Jennifer Landiswan.
Hi, I'm Eric Rosenblum. I'm a resident of Palo Alto North. Thanks, everyone, for listening to me. I work for a startup in San Mateo, so I'm familiar with both living here but traveling somewhere else to work. There were three comments today and one non-comment that has struck me. The first comment is that there's soon going to be no more twenty-to-forty-year-olds in Palo Alto to really be counted. I'm in my forties. I'm hoping to hold out as part of that micro constituency. But I actually buy this comment. It's true that housing is practically unaffordable, and I have friends who are doctors and lawyers who wonder how they can afford to live in Palo Alto, which is frightening, let alone a more vibrant, diverse community. But it's not just that. There's a pretty big generational shift in what people want. There's been a move away from wanting to have your big house and big yard at the expense of having to drive everywhere. Young people, it seems pretty clear, now value a return to cities, a return to density. There's less interest in car ownership, and there's a greater interest in having a community, places you can walk. And people are voting with their feet. When I was a product manager at Google, we would lose people because they wanted to stay in San Francisco, close to where they lived and worked. And they're fleeing in droves. When Twitter decides to stay in the city, that sends shockwaves through companies working here. And it's clear that it doesn't matter how much more housing you give them, they have a great need to have a denser community. The second is, we don't need more offices in Palo Alto, full stop. My company's in San Mateo. I wish it were here. There would be less drivers or fewer drivers if we could just get to work easily without having to get into our cars and drive to a separate community, but there was no office that was affordable for us. There are some companies that make a lot more than my small company that can't afford to be in Palo Alto, but the fact is, there's very little space. And therefore, the people that do live here often have to drive elsewhere to get to work, if they can even afford to live here. And finally, was a comment that first and foremost, we need to regulate parking, that that will solve our problem. I think that it's a misguided notion, although clearly there's a parking problem, and a lot of my neighbors have spoken eloquently about this. But I think we need to work on the relationship between transit, working, and living. And I think this includes a transportation plan and plan for smart density. Adina has spoken several times eloquently about the need for a transportation management program. I think the math is obvious. We can't build enough parking garages. We can't build enough spaces. You have to work on reducing the fundamental demand for transportation. The non-comment, and maybe I'm being unfair, maybe someone said this, is about what kind of city we are. Are we a small city, like a Berkeley or like a Boulder, Colorado, that is vibrant and home to businesses? Or are we a small suburb, like a Los Altos, which is home to people who don't really care if they live and work in that area? It's simply a suburb where they have a big house and drive elsewhere to work. And their own city may have a few restaurants, some nail salons, but it's not a place that's viewed as a vibrant and independent place. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council. Jennifer Landisman, and I'm a resident of 1175 Avenue. So I've heard a lot, I wasn't going to speak tonight, I was just going to listen, but a lot was said about demographics, and the reason I'm here and the reason I came here a year ago was because of one demographic, which is my daughter. She is sixteen years old. And we had the opportunity to live in Madrid for a year. And when we came back, the 27 University project was in the newspapers, and she was horrified. She said, "Mom, imagine, coming back to Palo Alto, we had been away for a full year. We hadn't visited or anything, and to find these out-of-scale office towers at the foot of Palm Drive." So my husband attended Stanford. I'm going to speak about another demographic, which is the international community, which has passed through Palo Alto. I mean, many of us are here, many of us have lived here. I sort of don't see myself as permanently staying here. I hope I can live to be ninety and be in Palo Alto, but I probably will have to move away. And Palo Alto is a place to experience. It's a treasure for the rest of the world as a green place, as a place where quality of life is maintained. So building height, I didn't realize until we saw this 27 University project how important it is, and that's the brilliance of Palo Alto, that we can look up and look at the sky. And it's frustrating, because I can see the desire to probably build a lot of housing and a lot of buildings and go up, but that's going to kill Palo Alto. And so that's where I think, it's not because we're resisting change, it's because, you know, we're being asked about a vision of Palo Alto, and this is the vision, and it's been preserved. So I want to speak to what the younger demographic thinks, younger than twenties and thirties. And, you know, not all of us have gray hair. I still have my dark hair and can attend the meetings. So I just want to ask, I'm glad that you're opening up the process, and I want you to think about, you know, what Palo Alto means. When we were in Europe, we met a lot of people that know Palo Alto or had been here, and they say it's the unique place in America, which is different from anywhere else. It's the place which has trees, people ride bikes, and a lot of them are going to be horrified to come back, whether it's for reunions or for anything, to find Palo Alto completely changed. And I hope it doesn't change, and I'm for Vision A. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and thank you to all the speakers. We don't have any more, right? Okay. Now we'll return to council for questions, comments, et cetera. The way we're going to do this is we have, from our staff, we have, yes, not that much time, Councilmember Verma, I agree.
Just checking.
We're going to start with the first two questions that they've posed, of how are we going to have a public dialogue about the future? How should this dialogue relate to ongoing planning efforts? Three questions. And what are the questions related to zoning and land use that should be considered? And then if we get through that, we may need to continue this meeting, frankly. I'm not so sure we have enough time to complete this, but we'll see how it goes. How should we reexamine the planned PC process and address the community's concerns? And then the third one is, how should we ensure transparency, consistency, and predictability for development applications that conform with current zoning? Which traffic and parking solutions can be implemented in the short term, and how will the cumulative impact analysis associated with the comprehensive plan update informed decision-making in the long term? Now, if council members have questions, comments, that don't fit neatly into those categories, I'm not going to cut you off. I mean, feel free, right, I mean, feel free to go ahead and, you know, say whatever you need to say, and try and fit that into those groupings, but if there are other things, feel free to go ahead and, you know, speak about whatever it is throughout the process. All right, Councilmember Niss.
Well, I'd love to stay in those narrow confines, but this isn't that type of night, so bear with me. What I'd really like to start with is a reality check. I want to go through some of the report that was really excellent tonight. It's number ten. It is simply titled, "Initiating a Community Conversation," and so forth. So let me first begin with what projects are PC projects. And I think one of the questions I would like to ask of staff, that doesn't have to be right away, is define planned community as it exists today. There seems to be a sense that whatever the developer has asked for, they will get. I think, I heard some of that when I was running last year. I think whether or not that's true is going to be one of the most important questions we ask. But I'm going through on page twenty and twenty-one, looking at some of the planned communities, and looking at some of those that would not exist if you didn't have a planned community. And one of them is the Opportunity Center. Many of you in here have spoken highly about the Opportunity Center and what it offers, and how unique it is in Palo Alto. Planned community, PC. The Sunrise Assisted Living, many have used Sunrise Assisted Living. A number of auto dealerships, which deliver a huge amount to us in terms of revenue. If I keep going down, I look at the Campus for Jewish Life, the JCC. Many people have moved into that. It's made a big difference in our community. I'm looking at the creation of a flag lot on Addison that allowed preservation of two historic residences. I didn't vote on any of these. I would credit the council who did vote on these at the time. And one of the last ones that's on that page is And one of the last ones that's on that page is the Treehouse Apartments. If any of you have not been there, I would suggest you visit it. A number of county dollars went into that, city dollars as well. And I think you would find that that's a very appealing place. The second aspect I want to go into is looking at our traffic data that is in this tonight. And if you don't mind, I'd like to ask the, in this case, our staff to go over the traffic data, which I went over with a group of friends late this afternoon, and everyone said they're never going to believe that. And I said, you're right. And so, and if you would at the same time reflect on that, that we now have gone in about five years from 70,000 Palo Alto jobs to 90,000. And I would lay our parking at the feet of that great increase in jobs, because those who come here have to park someplace. And as Nielsen Buchanan has told us many times, he knows exactly where they're parking. We all do. So if you would do that, and then I have a couple of other comments. Hillary, do you mind?
Of course.
Thank you.
Councilmember Niss, let me respond to the traffic questions. I should, I should say, in the, in the staff report you received, we couldn't obviously encompass the whole universe of issues here, but we did include two data sets that we had access to. One was average daily traffic volumes for a number of--
Can that be thrown up on the board?
We--
Okay.
No, we'll try. Let me describe them, and maybe Stephen can work some magic here. The first data set is average daily traffic volumes for a number of locations throughout Palo Alto, comparing 1999 volumes with 2013 volumes. And I should say that this 2013 data is from a very recent survey, and we're still actually tabulating results and mapping the information. So I asked staff to kind of jump ahead of the process--
A reliable, a reliable company did it.
Yes. Jump ahead and summarize the data for these locations. And what it shows is that in many locations, the volumes, daily traffic volumes are not yet equal to what they were in 1999. They're approaching, and in some areas, they're very close. But 1999, I, we think, is representative of the last economic boom cycle. And so what we're seeing is traffic volumes in some locations starting to get close to where we were back then. The other data set similarly compares of average daily traffic volumes. In this case, it's along El Camino Real, because that's the state highway that the Caltrans collects data for. And it's, in that case, we're able to show changes over time. So not just two points in time, 1999 and today, but starting in 2002 all the way up through 2012. And again, it shows that traffic is essentially stable. I mean, there's, you know, some, some change, some fluctuation, but it doesn't convey what, I think what everybody perceives is traffic has gotten so much worse than they recall. And the data isn't showing that significant degradation. And a couple of things to say about that. One is that perception, you know, that we have, we're human beings. We have memories that only go back so far. So some of this has to do with perception. The other has to do with, obviously, limited data sets, and that congestion, that volumes are only one component of congestion. So there may be other things going on there. But just as a snapshot, I think it was telling that we're seeing traffic volumes behave that follow the economic cycles.
If you'd go to the one just before this, I think it's, it's more helpful. I found that this was rather amazing. For those of you in the audience, because this is somewhat hard to read, the, the blue line is, the, the old line, the red line is the new line. And it's, it's so surprising to look at this, but there's no place in this community where the current traffic is up to the traffic in 1999, which was, was a big surprise. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, if I can continue on. I want to also, because a number of you have said tonight, beware of being too reactive, and I appreciate that. Your comments tonight actually were balanced, about half and half. It may not have seemed that way, but we were jotting them down up here, and Greg has extensive comments, and I'm sure he'll say about the same thing. But, but I want to reflect. I've also lived here a very long time. I want to reflect on the 80s. I want to reflect on, I was on the school board at that time, back in the olden days. And I remember going with Joe Semidion at 10 o'clock at night, 10:30, sometimes we'd be out early, and trying to find some place in this community to get something to eat. At 10:30 at night in 1985, there was nothing on University Avenue other than pizza my heart.
Pizza Go-Go.
Pizza Go-Go. No, it was pizza my heart then, too. Yeah. But this is a very different community. And for the man who spoke about now working in San Mateo, if he's still here, he speaks of a vibrant community being here now. This is very different. And I'm looking at some of you in the audience that I know well, and I know you remember back to that time. It was, this was not, as my kids used to say at that time, you know, it's not a whole lot of fun to live here. So this is a spectrum. You know, I can look at Mark sitting here, who's in his 30s, and some of us are no longer in our 30s, but I can still remember back. So I want us to think as we go forward with this, because we're hearing your comments. We hear about PCs. We hear that that, at this point, is, is the villain, and in some cases, I think it may be. But I want us to not forget that this is a vibrant and exciting community to live in. This is still the place, when you pick up USA Today, it will just say Palo Alto. It doesn't tell you that this is Crescent City or something like that, and have to tell you what state it's in. You're a well-known, well-respected, and very well-regarded community. I don't want us to lose this as we look at maybe throwing out the baby with the bathwater. Let's not do that. Let's think this through carefully. Let's think about where we have gotten in our 30 to 40 years, and balance as we go forward. I urge us all to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt.
I think that was a great discussion tonight. People talking about their vision of what the city is, what it could be, and the choices we should be making now to get us there. That is just what the dialogue on the comp plan should be. Help us as a community express ourselves in visions, sometimes alternate visions, to help us decide which direction we want to go in. Should the comp plan help us, or only identify those two? A question raised by it is, what can we do to foster public dialogue? Now, tonight, I think, is a, is a great start. But where do we go? And I think the starting point is on the identification of data. Let's, as a community, share data that describes where we are and where we're going. Let me take as an example, traffic. We have two slides in front of us. One says, on El Camino, over the last 10 years, traffic has declined by 10%. And it's done it in a steady pace. On the other page, looking at 12, 15 intersections around town, it says, over the last 13 years, traffic at these key intersections has declined by 20%. The data also says, we've added 1.6 million square feet of commercial space in town over that period. And the staff report concludes, let's add another $1.6 million, million square feet in our continuing comp plan, and let's not discuss that. That's a given. Now, that's a funny way to start a dialogue, is to have the answer in it. And also funny, driving around town these days, it seems to take longer to get places. If you're out driving in the morning, or 5 o'clock at night, El Camino, Middlefield University, and Barcadero, getting on the freeways, it seems to take longer. But this says, traffic is down 20%. Well, I went back to the historical data that we, as council members, has been given. I think there's an at places memo with a little table I put together. And I took actual measurements that are included in our current comp plan from 1996, and from the recent Stanford project, where they did a comprehensive plan. And I didn't take their forecast. I only took the base data they had. And I found 12 intersections where they had the same data. And it's funny, if you look at the delay at each of those intersections, it's increased from 35 to 55% at each one of those intersections between 1996 and 2009. Now, those are data that we work with, we make decisions on. I looked at the Arastodaro Charleston and El Camino data, the intersections. The Arastodaro Traffic Study, as their baseline, said that in 2005, during the morning commute, 4,100 cars passed the intersection. 2,007, 5,300 cars passed the intersection in the morning commute. In the recent Maybell Study, 2012, they said 6700 cars passed that intersection. That's an increase of like 20%, 50% from 2005. Now, those are the traffic studies given us by Cambridge Systematics, Aecon, Hexagon, TJKM, all these expensive traffic consultants, just measuring what's there. And they say traffic is increasing quite dramatically, the average between 3% and 5% per year. So why the discrepancy? Where, why do these numbers tell us such a different story? Any comment?
Can I just make a?
Yeah, I was going to respond by saying, and I think we made this point in one of the responses we provided to council's comments during the day-to-day. I think we were careful in our remarks just now, the remarks in response to Councilmember Niss's questions, and in this written response this morning, to make it clear that traffic volumes are not the sole determinant of congestion. We have presented traffic volumes here for these locations, but there are also peaking characteristics that would differentiate daily traffic volumes from peak hour traffic volumes. There are also the conflicting movements. How many cars are approaching these locations from other directions? How are the signals operating? All the things that contribute to congestion. And so when studies are provided to you, the volumes at a specific location, it may not just be the volumes on this main stem, but it could be the total volumes of that location in all the movements. And also, when studies are providing delay, as you've reported, delay can be increasing over time. I think our conclusion is that, as you've suggested, as you've suggested, there's a lot of data here that we need to find a way to communicate, to put out there as part of a comprehensive evaluation of traffic and parking impacts. We're suggesting that that could be done in the context of the comprehensive plan, as well as informing reviews of individual projects and the kind of problem-solving for traffic and parking issues that the council has directed us to take on on a short-term basis.
Yeah. That's my point, is I think as we get into a dialogue with the community, step number one, if they have identified a problem, congestion, density, manifestations of it are parking and traffic. A good starting point is, let's gather data, data that we can all use and process, where we can ask the question, what is this measuring and what's that measuring? Why are we experiencing this and someone else is experiencing that? I think the last chair of the Planning Commission, dealing with one of these traffic issues, saying, there is a problem, both of perception and of reality in our traffic studies, and we have a responsibility to try and deal with that. So that, I think, is a good starting point. And if your first question is, how do we start a dialogue with the community? I think the first way is, let's start with those basic issues that they've identified, traffic and parking. I've noticed that residents are putting out data on parking in the neighborhoods, dynamic counts going on at all times of day, that, you know, are a resource. And we should be dealing with that, with that resource, welcoming it and asking the question. I think the Palo Alto traffic model has consistently said, on every development project you list here, that there is no significant impact of traffic on these areas. And people scratched their head five years later and said, gee, I noticed an impact. What's going on here? So what is the Palo Alto traffic model? And what are we doing with it? How do we use it? I think I've heard three different stories of what the traffic model is or could be, each of which gives dramatically different data. So let's help the community engage in these issues by giving them the data that we can all work with and work from there. So I guess that's my suggestion as a starting point for engaging the community.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I think that most of us really can't fit into the categories that you suggested, which also leads me to think that we're going to need to have a special meeting, just so we can develop this dialogue more fully, and I think it's worthy of a lot of discussion. I came here to Palo Alto on January 5th, 1967, directly after being discharged from the United States Army. So in a month from now, I will have lived here for 47 years. And next year will also be my 18th year and last as a city council member. I have never started out any of my speeches at the council with those statistics. And I did it tonight for two reasons. One is that many people do start out their presentations by telling us how long they've lived in Palo Alto. And secondly, to sort of give some grounding as to why I think that this is a very appropriate discussion for us to have, and also to maybe give some perspective when I say, we've had this debate many, many times, and probably will have it many, many more times in the Shortly before he died, Gary Fazino, our much-beloved former city council member and mayor, sent out to many of us the first draft of his book, which he never got to complete. And one of the things that intrigued me about Gary's, basically, I call it, history of Palo Alto political life, is how this argument as to how much Palo Alto should grow has been going on since the 1890s. It changes shape over time, but it reoccurs every decade or so. And I've tried to count up how many times we've had referendum or initiatives during my time in Palo Alto. The Oregon Expressway one, probably the most important in our history, occurred a year or two before I arrived here. But-- But I count about a half dozen that have occurred since then, Colorado Park, whether Sand Hill Road should be extended to El Camino, the Super Block, the proposal by the Palo Alto Medical Clinica that then was to build a hospital downtown and so forth. And they go both ways. Some have clearly led to more development in our communities, such as the Oregon Expressway fight. Some have, in some ways, put a halt to some development, as the Super Block proposal did. Others, the Sand Hill Road one, which allowed the Sand Hill Road to be expanded, clearly went the other way. But Palo Alto continues to grow. It adjusts and has become one of the most vibrant places on the planet. And I think we've heard some of the speakers address that tonight. We have other speakers, other people who write to the council and say, "I thought that this was a small college town and you guys have changed it." No, I think that we haven't been a small college town for, we weren't when I arrived here in 67. We weren't as vibrant then, as I think Councilmember Niss has eloquently pointed out. But as somebody who did go to college in a small college town, we are not and haven't been since I came here. But that doesn't get to the question of how much we have to grow or not. I think that those who have said it's an either-or question, either we become, stay a place where people want to live, or we become a small San Francisco, really have missed the point. I think that by chance, by a series of good decisions, whatever, we've become a unique blend. We are a vibrant community, one that I think is fun to live in, where people do produce great ideas and at the same time have a very good place to live. And continuing to strike that balance is the task that the city council, any city council, is going to have to continue to do. You can't, in my view, and here I will respond to one thing that's been brought up specifically, I don't think you can have moratoriums. I think that they have all types of unintended consequences that are usually negative. And the example most recently we had was, I think, a city council that none of us participated on, which declared a moratorium around the Alma Plaza area, which led to the supermarket then being proposed withdrawing, and so on and so forth. Those type of things happen. The world continues to move, and we have to make decisions on the fly in some ways, but to make changes, but at the same time, continue to accommodate whatever change is occurring around us. So I do want to see us continue to have this debate. I do want to make reference to just a few people who've spoken, because I think some of them were very eloquent and thoughtful. In one sense, I agree with former Mayor Dick Rosenbaum when he said, "What are we doing with regard to the two big projects that were out there, 27 University and the Jay Paul proposal?" And here, I'd have to disagree with the city manager and the mayor, who I think frankly exceeded their authority by saying that they thought that they wanted to put that off our agenda. I don't think they had the authority to say that. I would like us to proceed on pace with the Jay Paul proposal. I have to be silent about 27 University because of my conflict, because of my wife's employment at Stanford. But I think that there's no reason why we shouldn't consider the Jay Paul proposal. I think the odds are, and they've been that way all along, that it's not going to work. And I think that people think that the council is all set to approve it. I don't think that's ever been the case. So I think one way or another, we ought to dispose of it. So it's either an issue or it's not, and not leave it hanging out there for no good reason that I can see. The merits of it or the demerits of it, I think, will be clear after the traffic study, which I'm told is due out next month. And I think then we ought to say what we want to do about it and move along one way or the other. I think that I'd like to also quickly make mention of the very good comments of Adina Levin about outreach to the younger generation. I think that if we're going to have a visioning proposal, we have to be much more creative than we've been in the past, so that we reach people who are not in this room. It's disconcerting when, and it's nobody's fault, except maybe those of us who are trying to reach out to the community, but I think I've heard virtually everybody who spoke tonight, I've heard them before, or I know them. And I would like to see a room full of people that I don't know. And how we're going to reach out to them, I think, is a real challenge. And otherwise, what we're going to hear is an echo chamber, the same voices saying the same things over and over again. We need new views, or at least we have to feel that we know what our community really feels. It's always amazing to me that everybody seems to know what the public really felt in a vote. I agree that Measure D has told us something, it's told us that we need to reevaluate things, but we have no idea what's in the mind of the, what was it? What, 6,000? Or, no, 8,500, 15,000 people voted, 8,500, no, 6,500, yes. We had one person who wrote us and said, "Well, I hope you got the lesson from Measure D, you need to build more roads." Well, that's one view. But votes, just a year ago, we had twice as many people vote in the city council election of 2012, 29,000, almost doubled to 15,000 now. And Councilmember Niss, who was well-known to the community for her positions, after all, nobody's been in office longer than she has on the council, she got 17,500 votes. In other words, more than the number of people who voted this year. I think that's an endorsement of her views. And so, have people changed that much in a year? I don't know. I think that we have to try to figure out where we go. We have to figure out what we think is best for our community. We have to figure out ways to get as many of our people involved as we can. And I think that's really a daunting challenge, and I look forward to participating in it.
So, Councilmember Klein took some of my talking points away, but I might restate them. I wasn't planning on talking about Maybell, but a lot of folks prodded it up. And so I do want to congratulate the No On Maybell folks for running an energetic and aggressive and victorious campaign. And now I'm gonna set the, by Joe Hirsch aforementioned, Palo Alto post blogs on fire by saying that if we were to vote on Maybell again today, I'd vote the same way. And I'd vote the same way tomorrow, and I'd vote the same way the next day. And that's because while 8,000, about 8,500 people voted against Maybell, more than 13,000 people voted for me to elect me to the city council. And during my campaign, I made it very clear that I was running for city council because I want to set Palo Alto up for another 40 years. And that's gonna mean smart, strategic, limited growth, so that my kids, who I don't have yet, can eventually grow up in the same kind of town I did, that had socioeconomic diversity, that had, you know, I worry about the inability, as was expressed by a lot of people from my generation, in the speaker comments, the inability of folks of my generation to be able to move here, to be able to raise their families. And I think that, you know, so that's why I ran for city council. I made that very clear to folks. If I don't get reelected a couple of years from now, say levy, but I'm not gonna kind of change the reasons why I ran for city council based on the election in November. That said, I probably agree with 75 percent of the things that folks have said today. You know, parking is clearly a problem that we need to address. We need to do a better job of creating a comprehensive vision for our downtown, for our catalog, for our city as a whole. And we need to do a better job, or a good job, of engaging all different segments of our great city in that conversation. And it was funny, I was looking out in the audience over the past three hours, and it's changed. And a lot of the young people are no longer here, and a lot of the older folks are still here, which at first I was amused by, because I thought young people are supposed to be able to stay up later. And then I realized it's because the young people have families they had to go home to, and they just couldn't stay around until 11 o'clock or 10:30 to listen to the entire dialogue. So we're gonna have to get creative as a city council, as a staff, going back to kind of our initial conversation for tonight, about how we craft this city dialogue, to create as many opportunities as possible for folks to engage, whether it's online and actually not in meetings, or it's whether it's in bigger meetings that we set up. Because while I just stated my thoughts, folks in the community have stated very different thoughts, and we all need to get together and have these conversations and deal with the data that Councilmember Schmidt referred to, and get clarity on the data from city staff, and then have a community dialogue about what we want this city to look like over the next five, 10, 20, 40 years. So that's something that, in regards to the timing that this is happening, I think is perfect, because we do have our comp plan coming up over the next year, and we are gonna have to redo our housing element again. And all of these things that we have to address next year anyhow, this is the perfect opportunity to engage all the different voices in our community, to hear what they have to say. A couple of things, just because I know this became an issue with Maybell. I live at 640 Forest in downtown, so somebody earlier was talking about how we all live in places that aren't impacted by parking. I'm so impacted, I'll probably get conflicted out of some things. So, you know, a lot of us, you know, we don't live in little bubbles and we don't feel the same things that all of you do. We do. What else did I have? Driving around at rush hour, and driving around at rush hour is getting difficult. They call it rush hour for a reason. You know, traffic's gonna be bad at rush hour. Folks come and they say, "Oh, my God, it took me so long to get here at 5:30 in the afternoon." That's gonna happen. You know, Palo Alto has become, has been for years. I moved here in 1984, by the way, I was three. And, you know, it's always been a destination, whether it's people who live here and work elsewhere, or people who live elsewhere and work here, there's gonna be traffic. We need to find ways. I was reminded, while we were talking about parking, of the conversation that we were having with the Parks and Rec Department a couple of hours ago, where they, through different field use policies, managed to create additional use out of the same assets that we already had. They took what was a lack of field space, and by changing the policies, now get more use out of the same number of fields, or maybe a few more fields. We need to do the same thing with parking, and we need to do the same thing with traffic, and we've been talking about that for a long time. Well, I mean, it's a long time for me, I've only been here for 10 months, but for five or six months, and I think we're getting to the point where staff's gonna be coming back with some proposals on that, and we can, you know, fold that into some of this discussion. So, you know, Palo Alto's an awesome place. We didn't get the, you know, and these are all silly rankings that third-party groups give us, but we didn't get the number-one livability ranking in the country because we're a terrible place to live. That's not to say that it's not perfect. That's not to say that, you know, we are becoming victims of our own success a little bit, and we need to do things to manage that. But let's kind of try to keep perspective of what a great place we live, or else our housing prices wouldn't be as much as they are, or else demand to get in here wouldn't be as high as it is. So, you know, I'm looking forward to the next year. I'm looking forward to being contradicted by all sorts of folks over the things that I believe, but that'll be the fun of the conversation.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, I think I'd like to frame my perspective around what I've believed for a long while are kind of some core values that most of the community holds. And in particular, as it pertains to development. We have people who live here, live here because they really value the quality of life at Palo Alto. They chose to live here, they continue to choose to live here. Most people are here because that's their perspective. People who fight really hard to protect it, including the people who say it's been totally destroyed, still value the quality of their life here, and that's the overwhelming majority of the community. And I think that the community has always been willing to accept a moderate rate of change, but under certain conditions. And those are that, first, that those projects that happen should be high-quality. We have a strong sense of this being an aesthetically and designed, high-quality community. Second, that the projects, the indirect impacts of the projects should not significantly degrade the broader quality of life in the community. And third, that we have a very, because this community is passionate about where they live, they want to have the opportunity to have early and meaningful participation in the process for things that affect them. And I think if we follow those guidelines, then we stick pretty much to the core values of the community. We're gonna have people who are on either side of those sets of values. But my personal opinion is that that represents the overwhelming majority of the community. There can be a range of perspective within those general values, but that's what drives my thinking in the broader sense. And I think about a lot of the comments that we've heard tonight. We've heard that, you know, people who say, "We need more commercial office space to support those people who live here who want to work here." Then we hear the argument that we need more housing space so the people who work here can live here. That sounds like a never-ending cycle, and it goes back to the principle that this is a very desirable place to live and work, and we're never going to be able to accommodate all the people who would like to live or work here. That's just not real. So then we look at what's an acceptable way, an appropriate way, to manage our community long-term, to make it a sustainable environment, to retain the things that we value. And when we get off kilter, and we had Dick Rosenbaum and others, and Councilmember Klein alluded to this, that when we have these big projects, like the four-office tower proposal at 27 University, or this Jay Paul project at 395 Page Mill, those kinds of projects, even like the 27 University, has, in essence, those office towers have been killed. That's not coming forward. But I talk to neighbors and friends, and they still think it's alive. And a lot of the people tonight still think it's alive. So the harm that gets done when we allow projects like that to go too far along is very difficult to repair. And we start undermining the credibility of the council and the staff by allowing those things to go too far in the process, and we can't get the genie back in the bottle. Even when we say, "Look, this is not going forward, we took council action on it, we're imminently going to have action on the Jay Paul project." I've been opposed to that one from the start, along with several of my colleagues. Staff gets accused of holding back a traffic study because it was too unfavorable to Jay Paul. My understanding is, it's the opposite, that there were impacts that were not included, it was too favorable to the project, but this conspiracy theory kind of starts propagating, and we hear all these things. I read just recently where one of the opponents of Measure D accused the council and the staff of wanting to drive out the Buena Vista Mole Home Park, which is actually 180 degrees from the intention. But these things start taking on a life of their own. So what do we need to do? We need to get back and recalibrate things. We've heard a lot of talk about PCs tonight, and Councilmember Niss spoke about some of this. And when we have in this, in our staff report, we have a list of all the projects in the pipeline. I counted 21. I counted 21, and actually, one, the Buena Vista, was mistakenly listed as a PC. So out of 21 significant projects in the pipeline, two are PCs. And one of them's a Jay Paul, which is likely to go nowhere, and the other is this one on the corner of Page Mill and El Camino. And those are the only PCs in the pipeline, out of 21 projects in the pipeline. And so I would say that those who are focusing on the PC as the primary culprit of our problems of having too much development occurring too rapidly, which I agree with, are misguided and doing a disservice to those in the community who are concerned about the rate of change and growth. The problem is not principally the PCs. Now, as long as we've got something like Jay Paul out there, that's a tough argument to convince people of, that project is sitting there. As long as that 300,000 square feet's there, my words sound a bit empty. But in reality, that's not our primary problem. We just approved a project at the site of Equinox Exercise Center and WeFix Mac Building, and it was conformant to existing zoning. And I heard someone earlier say how we should just ignore the housing density bonus, in essence. Well, we can't do that. This is state law. So what we have, and here's what I think is one of the most important things we need to do. Yes, we need to make sure that PC projects are not abused. And I think that, for instance, I've said this publicly in the hearing, so I can not sound prejudicial, that like this Jay Paul project is way outside of anything we should ever consider. But that's not really our big problem going forward. If you look at our zoning map, we have all these different commercial districts, up and down El Camino, California Avenue, University, and elsewhere. And those number of parcels are massive. Now, not all of them are going to get redeveloped in the next couple of years, but what we saw at the WeFix Mac site is that what can actually be built under existing zoning, and then if it has a significant residential component to it that is affordable, it has a bonus. So all of our zoning is zoning plus X percent. And so what we put in place when we did that zoning, before we had these state mandates, was one concept of what would get built. Now, under existing zoning, we have something else. I think we need to readjust those zoning standards. And I think that we should look at moderate reductions. We don't have to do drastic things on this to tip the scale and slow down this process and have projects that have elbow room to have the public space and the mass and scale that the community would value and accept. So if we dial back the commercial a little bit, I think that will have an impact. And then we have, these are projects, like the CN Zone is a mixture of commercial and residential. We also have, under our state housing element, that is driven by the state, and this council resisted the state higher-yet allocation for our city for five years, fought that. And we get grief from the communities acting as if we embraced it and we were in jeopardy of having really onerous mandates come down from being sued as a city if we didn't adopt this. But we can look at still adjusting that, because the state housing mandate talks about number of units. And so they count a 6,000-square-foot home, the same as they count a 600-square-foot one-bedroom apartment. And what we've seen is our demographics, as we've had speakers talk tonight about it, we clearly have two growth areas. One is seniors who need generally smaller places, not everyone. And we hear this response, "Oh, I don't want to," you know, "You're saying that people," we heard this over Maybell, "that people would never want to move into those units." Nonsense. There is a demand for that. And we also have young professionals who are not yet having families, and there's a high demand for that housing. So we would be meeting the demand for the housing by having the same number of units that we permit for a site, but a lower floor area ratio, essentially a lower density, smaller units. We've done some of that in the comprehensive plan. So we could tweak our zoning and adjust a lot of this issue, along with addressing and making sure that we have the appropriate amount of parking. And that's a more complex subject, and everybody thinks that we have one level of parking need, and the statistics don't necessarily show that. So I'll leave that for a moment. I do want to revisit something that Councilmember Schmidt had brought up, which is that we have the staff report, several graphs that showed a number of different trends in the community. And as he pointed out, what we have, for whatever reason, in the staff data, shows this significant decline in traffic volumes despite significant increases in congestion at intersections, and despite, on the other staff graphs, a 20% increase in jobs and an 8% increase in population. And with all due respect, I understand that there are other factors that can go in to explaining why we have congestion, and they cannot possibly explain this. You just can't have 20% increase in jobs, 8% increase in population, 30% to 50% increase in intersection congestion, and a 20% decline in traffic. I'm sorry, I just, I've, that's going to be a real tough sell, and it doesn't make anything close to sense to me. Something's wrong with the data. So that's my opinion. And the reason why I think that's real important is that we need to reestablish our credibility with the community. And if we go and put out, even with good intentions, believing our data's correct, and it, if it isn't correct and/or it doesn't pass a smell test, we haven't accomplished a really important aim, which is reestablish our credibility. So we've got to go back and not be enamored with, if something doesn't look right, let's not present it right away. Let's really question, "Why doesn't it look right? Something's not adding up here, and let's dig back into it and try and figure out what's the real explanation." Because something's not adding up right. And I spent nine years on Planning and Transportation Commission. I'm not a rookie at this, and I'm not just a layperson. This just looks as off as any data I've seen. So I do want to echo a comment that I think it was Councilmember Klein made about, you know, this whole misconception on how PCs can be so bad. If you look at the list in the staff report and the PCs that we have had over the last, since 1998, and I went back, and first, we're not having more PCs than we did. The pace at which we're having PCs right now is essentially the same pace we've had for 15 years. There's no big uptick in PC numbers. There are a couple of real big projects. Now, the 27 University wasn't technically a PC, but it had all the features of a big PC, so I'll even include that. But it's not happening. We have the, as I mentioned, we have the Jay Paul project, but you look at the others, most of them, we had Edgewood Shopping Center, I think that was a good outcome, and the community and the neighborhood valued it. We had Palo Alto Commons, which was comparatively small, senior-assisted living. We had the JJNF Market Project, which several of us were very skeptical about, and it was the neighborhood who really pushed that outcome of that project in order to try and save JJNF Market. We had the Treehouse Apartments, we allowed a flaglock creation to preserve two historic homes. This is not what has fundamentally degraded our quality of life in our community. So I think we need to quit just finding a boogeyman, and instead, looking at the real problems. It's tough, it's complicated, we're going to need to have much better community dialogue on this. So that's one of the things that I'd like to see, and members of the public have talked about this. When we did the last comprehensive plan, we had some really significant community engagement about what was the vision and where we were going, and I think we need to really invest those resources. And I'd like to see the resources, what we had decided we were going to do on 27 University was have an open public process on what would be a right design that the community would want for that location. I'd like to see this come back to its council as soon as possible and redirect those same dollars and put them in with whatever other dollars we need into a real community dialogue, bringing in prominent experts who will share with us vision, who will facilitate community dialogue, and really have an educational process so that people are sharing the same information and that where we have a good vision, it's really understood. I heard a number of speakers talk about how the comp plan is a good document, and I agree fully. I mean, this is one of the things that has been a real frustration for me on the council is that there has been too little emphasis by our staff and my colleagues, to many of my colleagues, on the comp plan, and the belief that it actually is a very valuable document. And to that end, one of several of the speakers had talked about, and this has been a sore point in staff reports, that I believe that we should have staff reports present all significant elements of the comp plan that a project impacts, and then go right ahead, and if staff chooses to make a recommendation one way or another because they feel that in the net, the comp plan favors this project, that's perfectly fine. But lay out all the pros and cons objectively. And if we lay them out objectively and we can't make the argument that it's compliant with the comp plan, then we probably shouldn't approve the project. So I really want to see that change occur in staff reports. I do also want to see, we have a project coming forward at, I think it's 500 University, that is fully parked, and maybe even overparked, for all demand on that site, not with credits, not with any of that. Somebody says, "I can make money doing a development, compliant with code, fully parking on university." So why is it that everybody else says it would be the end of the world and kill all development in Palo Alto if we required even moderately greater parking on site? So I'm very interested in what's that project telling us about what's possible. Finally, a number of people have spoken about needing good data, whether it's the traffic or otherwise. We don't have any good information about how many people are working where in our community. And it's very difficult for us to make good, sound decisions without that information. We also allow, then, as we've had these shifts, we have some businesses that we saw when we were looking at some of these downtown issues. Our economic development manager checked with two of the biggest employers in downtown, Palantir and SurveyMonkey, and rather than overparking, like everybody, and most everybody in the adjacent neighborhoods have insisted that all of these downtown businesses, and in particular, the IT firms, are cramming more people in than the four persons per thousand that we were anticipating. Both those companies were below that four per thousand, and yet, it's clear that we are having other places where there are companies well above that, and we treat them all equally. And what's the impact that we're really caring about? It's how many workers are getting packed in. We haven't had that many square feet of additional office space built in the last 15 years in all the downtown. That's not the explanation for our problems predominantly, it may have contributed, but it's not the core explanation. And it's not that all of them are packing in too many employees. So, one, we need data on who has what and how many employees. How can we sculpt a problem without decent data? Second, we should have a system, we're in the middle of pursuing a transportation demand management program where we would really reduce the car trips. But we don't have any data that's any good. So I would like to see, right away, a business registry. I personally favor that it would then eventually go to a business license tax where businesses that have the baseline level of employees that are anticipated to the zoning would pay a lower rate, and if you have more employees than that, you pay a premium, because your impacts are at a premium. But either way, whether we ever go to a business license tax, we should simply go forward right away with a business registry that can be accomplished these days, online, very efficiently, and get the data, and, because otherwise, we're all sharing opinions. As the public is sharing opinions, we are lacking good data, and I'd like to see that occur right away. And the one final quick thing is that design, that is another concern in the community. We need to see how we can alter our process so that the quality of the projects and compatibility of the projects that are being built is better for the community. And I think we need to look at our process with the Architectural Review Board, look at whether they should have an earlier review of a process at a sketch stage, because I think the process that happens for the ARB and the Planning Commission and the council is that after these developers have so much money and so much time invested, we feel that the most we can do, most of the time, is tell them, "Try to make that bad project a little less bad." And that's the battle that we end up fighting so much of the time. So how do we reverse this process and say, "No, we're going to have good projects"? And that, part of that is putting the parameters on it early on, before all that investment has occurred, where, before we feel this obligation to not screw people up by our process. And then we also need to look at the guidelines that we're using with the ARB on compatibility and design, and look at how we can improve those and make them more aligned with what I think are community values. So, thanks.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. And just a question for the mayor, too. Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, what did you say?
So, we are not going to get through this this evening, I presume. And so what are you anticipating for a next stab at this? Because, and also a little bit of clarity, because staff said they would try to take a stab at summarizing what we were going to be doing for next steps. Since this is a study session, we're not taking votes, we're not making motions, so how will that be accomplished at the next meeting, I presume?
Well, I think, first of all, I think we're going to need to have a special meeting to continue this. Councilmember Klein made that suggestion. I think that was a good one, frankly. And actually, just thinking ahead to, at the moment, I think what we're going to do is go through one round where everyone gets to say whatever they want tonight, so at least everyone gets to speak. And then I think we should basically adjourn, unless you guys want to, I mean, if you guys want to go to midnight. And then I think we need to have a special meeting, and I was going to talk to staff and let staff indicate to you how they would like to proceed from there.
Okay, that sounds fine. And then, prior to the next meeting, it'd be nice to have a little bit more clarity about how we're going to get to, what the next steps are that staff will follow up with. So I'm happy.
Is it a point of order?
Yes, just on the timing. We've taken 29, 36, we've taken an hour on the first five speakers. So if we continue at that pace, we'll be close to midnight. Just pointing that out, I'm willing to do that, but I think we also ought to have some understanding as to how long people are going to go.
Okay. I think it's only fair to let people, each council member speak tonight at least once. And...
Well, I think that you at least want to remind them at the 15-minute mark, which would be the second-highest of the evening.
Only the second-highest.
So, I'm glad to get to follow Councilmember Burt because I agree with a number of the things that he said. We had a recent conversation about core values at the council, and I think it is a core value that we should adopt, which is public trust. And I think a lot of what this discussion about it tonight is about the public trust. How we engage the community in any of these discussions is about building community, and we can't have community without trust. we can't have community without trust. And to have trust, we have to be trustworthy. So that leads to transparency, objectivity, objective staff reports, staff reports that are balanced. There've been some comments tonight about, you know, the traffic analysis in the staff report. I agree with both Councilmember Schmidt and Councilmember Burt's comments that there may be the explanation that was provided by staff, but it can't be the standalone analysis that's provided in the staff report. You know, whether that's accurate or not, I'm not in a position to say, but it can't be the only thing in the staff report that indicates what traffic impacts are in a current condition. It's not plausible. We don't believe it, the public's not going to believe it, and if there are other indicators, then they should also be in the staff report. The other thing that, and I don't mean to pick on anybody, but just as an indication too, the other thing that's in the staff report that I found really imbalanced was that it seemed to be under pipeline projects, it seemed to be, "Take a light touch." It seemed to be telling us to take a light touch because, and what it says is, "The Palo Alto takes pride in a business climate that supports innovation and entrepreneurship." I agree with that, but it didn't also mention how the community also supports, and is in the comp plan, about community character and any number of other things. It only mentioned this one aspect, and it really needs to be in our staff reports that we represent, you know, a reflection of the comprehensive plan and our community values. So, Hillary, you've come at an interesting time. You stand to be a hero, but you're going to be put to the test here, too, and I'm sure you're up to it, but it'll be an interesting time. I just want to say one thing about Maybell, as Councilmember Berman did. When the council was setting that project for the ballot, I said at the time that I would have welcomed a referendum on any number of projects that I voted against in the past, but that wasn't the project. I still abide by that. I still think Maybell was a good project. I still say I would have welcomed a referendum on any number of other projects I've voted against in the past and that I wasn't, I didn't prevail upon. But at any rate, PCs, I think we should have a moratorium on PCs, including those in the pipeline. I'm not for eliminating PCs. I think there are, and a couple of you have given examples of some actually very good PCs. There are some things that can be accomplished through them that aren't really accomplishable other ways, but where people are upset, and I appreciate and agree, is that we've had a number of situations where we have broken promises, that the public benefits haven't been delivered, they haven't been consistent, they haven't been clearly identified, and they have not been enduring. Sometimes the PCs also result in very overblown incompatible building projects. I disagree that a moratorium would be a very negative impact on the business climate. I think there are a number of reasons why it's a responsible thing to do, both for the development community as well as for the public. I'd like to be a community where our commercial entities that want to come to Palo Alto are welcomed, not referended, not appealed, because they're unpopular because of the projects that are being designed and are being sent through the pipeline. So I think it's a responsible thing to do. We have to be responsible, too, for impacts that we're going to deliver that are going to live on for a long, long, long time, whether it be traffic, parking, buildings that are incompatible and inconsistent with comp plan policies, ARB findings. I agree with Councilmember Burt in that, well, I think we need to take a hiatus, if you will, on development projects during the pipeline until we can accomplish a few things. And I don't even, I don't know that it needs to be a moratorium, I don't know what the term should be used, but there are a few things we need to get in place. One is, we need to have some particular expertise, some specific expertise, in training on compatibility. We need to have a clear understanding whether FARs are maximum guarantees, or if they're to be moderated by ARB findings, SEQA findings, daylight planes, setbacks, any number of things. How much exceptions apply or don't apply, there are any number of things that I don't think it would take us very long to work through, but getting some clarity around those, because I think a lot of people think that if you have the potential for a 30,000-square-foot building, by golly, that's what you're going to get. And that's never how I thought that zoning worked, and especially when we have, and it doesn't even make sense because we have ARB findings that talk about compatibility and transition and mass and scale. Why do we even have those if FAR is a maximum guarantee? It's a non sequitur to me. So, and the compatibility, I just, I can think of very few people, maybe one, quite frankly, on the ARB and HRB combined that seem to understand compatibility. The SOFA 2, I'm not saying I'm an expert on it, but SOFA 2, Pat Burt was on it as well, there are some very good compatibility standards were incorporated into SOFA 2. And I think that some broader application of those and understanding of those, maybe training in those, would be very, very helpful. We just can't continue with having a community that's this upset about development projects. And the reason I think a hiatus is important is not only to get these things in place and clarified, it's also because once these buildings are built, they're here. You know, there's no like, "Well, it's just three more buildings," or, "Well, it's just 20 more buildings." They're here, and they're going to be here for a very long time. To go to, again, Councilmember Burt's comments, there are some development standards I think we can look at, too. Some of them are very simple, like, why do we need double-height office space? It doesn't count towards FAR, and it just increases the mass and bulk of buildings. It's not necessary. Some retail spaces want, you know, higher ceilings, but maybe we should put a limit on that, but office space with double height, I mean, it's just a simple, it's one example. I had asked a question about, that I submitted much earlier. "What are staff intending and what are other communities using to evaluate the employee density in commercial spaces that affects traffic analysis, parking demand, and consideration of adequate TDM programs? What is the timing for implementation of such a measure?" That didn't really get an answer in the staff report or subsequently, but I think that is something that needs to be addressed coherently and in the very near upcoming future. And then other going to, I don't need to be parroting Councilmember Burt, but it seems as though I am. I also favor a business registry. When I ask the question about how is staff, how does the city consider how many employees we have, what our daytime population is? And it uses the Longitudinal Employee Household Dynamics, LEHD, program that's part of the Center for Economic Studies in the U.S. Census Bureau, which is hardly applicable to Palo Alto, I would say, because it's some kind of broader evaluation on a more leveled-out analysis, I think. And if that's wrong, I'm certainly open to hearing that. But I think, but I think a business registry would be much more appropriate for us, and it would be also a better way for us to track what our traffic and parking implications are, as well as what kind of businesses are here. If I'm wrong on that, you're welcome to chime in.
Yeah, Stephen's telling me that is data that's specific to Palo Alto, so I think it is a good source of data, but your point about employment densities is well taken, and we are engaged in that kind of data collection effort in the downtown cap work that's been authorized by council.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. The other thing that I think should be implemented for all of us, boards, commissions, council, is some SEQA training. It just, it just is necessary. I mean, I've taken several classes and been exposed to it through several years on the Planning Commission, but I'm certainly no expert, and I get rusty on things if you don't use them more often like you do at the Planning Commission. And I just, I see a lack of understanding of SEQA and boards and commissions, and I think it's very, very helpful. J-PAL is a PC project, so my thinking is that it would be subject to the moratorium. 27 University, I think former councilmember, former mayor Rosenbaum said it, "Well, these are different times," and I think that project has received plenty of public scrutiny and none of it positive particularly. So if something is going to come forward at that site, it needs to be something significantly different and in a very, very transparent fashion. So I will, I think, I think I will leave it there. Thank you.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Shepard.
Thank you, and thank you to the community members for coming out. I just also want to start out by the way Councilmember Klein did. I've lived here for 29 years now. I moved here for Intel. My husband was working at Intel. The commute that we had out on the coast in San Mateo County was hard for him, and so we moved into town, so to speak. So this is basically my first experience outside of six months of living in San Francisco of having a sidewalk. So for the last 29 years, I've had a sidewalks, and we've had opportunities to move to areas that would, I know Barron Park has this type of experience that I typically had with areas that I've lived before. But I have to say, regardless of where you live in Palo Alto, there's a sense of community here that is undeniably vibrant. I've never lived in a place where I could hear, as I used to say, my neighbor's coffee grind go off every morning routinely as I wake up in the morning, and feel very respected by my neighbors and my community and the fierce commitment that we have to community, and I cherish that and have tried to use that experience, not just the coffee grind experience, but the commitment to community in a lot of the work that I've done in this community, the volunteer work and now my council work. We live in a prosperous and progressive region. We are a city, we're not a suburb. We are a city of neighborhoods. And yet, the decisions that Stanford has made has made the biggest impression on me as I've sit on council and learn more and more about the different conundrums that we have to decide and go through in order to consider wisely decisions that come forward to us. I have to say, the most significant and impactful decision that got made was to dedicate 700 acres to public, to private business in Stanford lands, and to create the first-of-its-kind research park in the world, which is now trying to be cloned throughout the globe, which pumps out the type of research and innovation that has never stopped since its initial stages when Varian moved in in 1951. And the important research that is now continuing to come out of there with the development of a liver for a new baby born, a new baby born to a couple that was expecting to never have that child. I have to be, we zone for that entire area, and it is what attracts the globe to Palo Alto. I'm convinced of that, and I'm actually quite fascinated by that. It's a pastoral setting, there's horses right next to Tesla, horse pastures, people out for their ride or feeding their horses. We have an amazingly unique experience here with a diversity in neighborhoods, with what neighborhoods want. I live in a neighborhood where I have lot sizes that are not allowed to be zoned for anymore. They're 50 by 100-foot wide lots. So, and I think it's the best place to live in Palo Alto, and most of the people I know think that they live in the best place in Palo Alto, and I'm very proud of that. So as I sit here and listen to the different parts of how wrong council has been and the actions that we've taken, we get accused of not being transparent in the newspapers because we have too many committees. We went carefully through our policy for how we approach zone changes in policy and procedures when I first got on council, and I was very grateful for the work that community members did, dedicated community members, one of them is here this, a couple of them are here this evening, actually, I see a couple of them, to make sure that our processes are more transparent. But I don't think we have it right. I think we can go back and revisit these processes. I believe that the subcommittee work that we are now doing, both in the rail committee, has brought back substantial, important initiatives that have helped this community manage one of the largest public works projects threatened, threatening our community, which was the high-speed rail design as it was originally designed. And this community did an incredible job of rallying to support the blended system, which we now have, which we need to develop more because we need to get more people, you know, working on riding public transit. And yet, at the same time, I was personally shocked to find that the very next agenda item after we voted to approve the Maybell project was for a housing element, which we struggled with for seven long years to put in those units that A-BAG has required us to put into our zoning. Thoughtfully, we put it through our regional housing mandate committee, where they rigorously looked at it with planning commissioners and school board members to look at how this zoning was going to affect the future growth of Palo Alto. I personally asked the city attorney to include communications by nonprofit groups that are working rigorously to secure those housing units, to make sure that we are a friendly development site for those units that are telling the California Housing and Development Corporation where we get our certification. I think I just muddled their name. And yet, after the Maybell decision, where we had a packed chamber with extra seating in the back, everybody left when we had to approve the housing element for our comprehensive plan and get it certified in order to not be sued, like Menlo Park was, and have the horrible repercussions which they had. We all spoke how much we didn't want to approve this, and yet it was the wise thing to do in order to keep our community from the tragedy that happened right next door in Menlo Park. And the only people that stayed to speak on it was the League of Women Voters who supported the element. I expected the, you know, the people that were against the Maybell project to be here challenging us on that, yet it wasn't there, and all the information is in there to become informed. So I guess I'm, so I am trying to figure out how to navigate and read this community. I completely understand that, you know, that we do have to make big decisions. I have never received one email of complaint about the Pali Theater, which is 86 feet high. I haven't gotten any. I don't know if staff has. So I'm not sure how to initiate this conversation. I would like to reach out. I've tried to make sure that we have the material available because I believe that this community is very well-educated and is capable of reading this material and being able to follow the types of decisions that council has to make in a fluid situation where we can't just time things out, that this is similar to telling my 12-year-old I don't want them to turn 13 because I don't want to go through the teenage years. This is, like I say, this is a prosperous and progressive community. People want to live here, they want to have an address here. So what, and I also would like to respond to the concern that somebody had. I know I emailed a few people that asked me, "What about this 55-foot height limit building that we passed a couple of weeks ago?" I said, "Well, you know, this was the comprehensive plan, this is what I identified in the comprehensive plan. If a project comes forward to council that complies with our comprehensive plan and our zoning, then I guess it looks like we're doing what the developer wants us to do, but actually, we've made them do what we want them to do by complying with the comprehensive plan." So the project does pretty typically become approved, and that's what happened two weeks ago. We approved a project that was in near-complete compliance with just a few little tweaks, which actually enhanced the project and reduced the footprint of the project. So I think that that was, it's important for us to continue to be able to do this. And I think it's also important for us to continue to learn and to recalibrate. I think Councilmember Burt is using how we have this conversation, although this conversation has specifically been, most recently, and actually, council's been working on this zoning process... been working on this zoning process for quite some time in densification, traffic, and parking, I actually don't think we've taken up this topic called density specifically. I think we've taken up traffic and parking a lot and with rigor. But density is something that I think that we take up when we do the comprehensive plan review, which I think needs to get on better track. And I think we have pushed it out for a variety of reasons. We've had some turnover on the planning commission, and we've wanted people to have some time to get familiar with where we are. And yet, what I've learned, being on council, by being delivered not just High-Speed Rail, but the Stanford Hospital Development Agreement, that there's just no timeout. There is just, we need to continue to improve and produce the type of experience that Palo Altons expect. Residences wouldn't want us to have a moratorium on, you know, wiping out their homes and building them to capacity on their lot sizes any more than I think commercial does, but I do believe that the density bonus law does have an impact of supersizing our zoning that we have listed. And I think we need to take a look at, you know, how we want to consider that as we move that forward. I know that that will be coming shortly to us for our own ordinance, but we are right now being governed by the state rule since 2004 on the density bonus law. So when we are talking about reaching out to the broader community, it's very important for me to hear from many others. I know we do a survey every year, every year, the survey is, you know, about 85% people love living here, you know, or super love living here. It's, our housing prices in the worst recession of my generation, my age, hopefully, our housing prices did take a slight dip, and then they went right back to where they were and exceeded that, even with homes that you can't park in front of. So we are managing somehow to stabilize the type of environment that we live in so that people are not having financial hardship by buying a property and then not being able to, you know, manage the value of it if they have to, you know, relocate and sell their homes. But on the other hand, I do believe that one of the things we could do would be to have a timeline on our website so that we could see when we're making some of those critical decisions in the comprehensive plan. I think the comprehensive plan is intimidating. Most people do not, are not familiar with it, except for commissioners. And quite frankly, when you get elected to city council, you become very familiar with it, but you get familiar with it in the progression of each of the different experiences that you, that you were brought into on the council agenda. I know our former planning director Curtis Williams did some sessions where he would go through different types of approaches to how to do development, and that was also very informative in getting me up to speed with SB 375 and all of those different influences that have impacted zoning over the years. So I guess, basically, if we could have that type of a framework on our website where you can go and see, you know, how we're going to be addressing the different parts of the comprehensive plan so that we can direct people to that. I actually, I wanted to ask this question, how many people have read the staff report tonight, because I do find that, you know, community members don't read the staff report very often. It's an intimidating report sometimes, sometimes it's very thick. It wasn't very thick tonight, but sometimes it's extremely thick with a lot of information in there that sometimes isn't well, isn't, you know, is hard to process. But, you know, over the years, I've learned how to gather the information that I need and learn how to ask the questions that I need in order to make my decision for the evening. So anyway, I think that that would be helpful. And also, I think Claudia, our communications director, is also reinvigorating Democracy Now or something that, Peak Democracy. I think that that would be useful. I'm not finding this survey that Bob Moss is doing very useful. I actually think that all of the boxes here that you're asking questions to, we actually did when we approved the Maybell site. We put, pushed the setbacks back, we reduced the density, that type of thing, and yet that still did not become, you know, illustrated well to the community. So I think anything we can do to help keep people informed, helping them to define the terms that we have to look at, there's a lot of acronyms that we do, it's all intimidating, but just also kind of be, you know, basic about how, when we are doing an important decision that is related to density and the related issues that go with density, which is traffic and parking and circulation and those types of things. So those are my comments and my reflections on this evening.
Councilmember Price.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the community for making comments and the staff and everyone for participating in this. I certainly see this as the beginning of many, many steps. I want to thank the staff for putting the major elements in the staff report and sort of outlining some key things that we should be looking at. I cannot, I must say something about the Maybell site. As you know, I, as my colleagues did, as well as I did, I'm a strong supporter of it. I do think it was a very, very well-designed project, and what I think happened is the storyline regarding what people were looking at was shifted from the issue of senior affordable housing for a well-designed project and the whole issues around density and development and PC zones. I'm, I recognize that this discussion is, has been inevitable. It's been brewing, it's been coming, and I understand that. But what I think is unfortunate is that, at the end of the day, we do not have senior affordable housing that we so desperately need. And I think that is still a real shame because the people that really suffered because of, will continue to suffer because of this, are those who are the more vulnerable. So as it relates to public dialogue, many of my comments have, many of my colleagues have commented on this, it's very clear we have a responsibility to define what we think are terms of engagement, to make sure that the individuals that come to these meetings, who are often very well-prepared and thoughtful, and make some cogent comments and sometimes make comments or maybe not so cogent, that's not anything different than city council members sitting up here. So the issue in my mind is to take the very best practices, all of your experience as public sector employees, as planners, as city managers, as city council members and the public, it really is critical. The way I look at my responsibilities are, I'm not only here to represent current issues and look at the impact on the current community, so being more mindful of mitigations and some of the other things that we've talked about. But I think my broader responsibility or an additional one is to look for the future and to look at what kind of opportunities are we building here in order to have a very diverse community. Would people talk about the lack of housing or the problems that, with all due respect, that doctors or lawyers will have trouble living here? Give me a break. How about the people who are not doctors and lawyers who want to live here? How about our grown children? How about our grandchildren? Frankly, we've passed the point where many of those well-deserving individuals who work hard, et cetera, have no prayer to live here. So as part of that discussion again is the issue of what are the decisions we're making regarding housing, regarding density, regarding urban design that make it possible to live here, make it possible to work here. The other comment quickly about the workers who do come to our city, we have many, many people who work here, yes, and both our residential population and our employment population will continue to grow. I guess the question is, at what pace and how are we going to manage our responses or how are we going to anticipate that? Frankly, the workers who come here spend a lot of money in the city of Palo Alto, and we greatly benefit from the economic vitality that we enjoy. As it relates to moratorium, I'm absolutely opposed to that concept, as it's sort of a generic concept, as it relates to economic vitality. If we're really a cutting-edge community and we're forward-thinking and we're innovative, that we like to take on challenges and we like to be flexible, then we need to look at our responsibilities in that way. And one of that, one of the points of flexibility is the PC zoning, as I see it, and we have to have a much more vigorous debate and discussion of what that is. But in terms of the economic vitality here and the, some of the traffic impacts, we have to figure out a way to make these competing issues work. We enjoy economic prosperity here in general, not all of our residents, but in general we do, and that's because we are seen as a desirable and innovative destination. We're very proud of that. So what do we need to do to look to the future? So we look at these, the planning process, a more engaged participation. It really is critical, and I'm, and it's not only for the people who own properties here, but the people who rent here. We have a substantial number of renters as well, and they need to be involved in the process. The different age groups that have been represented here, the different people that have spoken, really, really critical. Many of them don't have time to come to our meetings. I do not believe we should have a moratorium, a flat-out moratorium on PCs. I think we need to slow down the, some of the projects that were, some of the concepts and ideas that have been brought forward, and we need to accelerate the conversation on the PC zoning, what that means, the implications of PCs, and how we can reform it to make it better, so that the outcomes are the outcomes that we want, that are attractive, that provide economic and vitality, that provide architectural diversity in our communities. And the many comments have been made earlier about enforcement and the whole debate of public benefit, and I'm sure we will talk about that in greater depth. The other comment, it's been noted, is that I do think there needs to be greater education for everyone regarding what are development standards and what does space zoning mean versus what the potentials are for PC development. I think there is some confusion on that, and there's a lot of terminology that's thrown around that I think is very confusing for people. So those are my major comments. The, we need the data about the business community. One thing that I think is happening here is we have all of these preliminary or pending studies that we're doing, and there's not a kind of a broader view regarding what are the goals of each of those and what are the kinds of data that you're collecting to support those particular studies. So the list you have here of plans, I forget, slide, wherever this is, slide nine in the PowerPoint, transportation demand management wasn't on there, the traffic modeling, of course, was not on there. I know you were making just a preliminary list of things we've already discussed, but in this community engagement revisited and created, I need to get a feeling from the staff if, in our next discussions, we will talk about how these other plans and programs that are rolling out, you know, the parking permits, the, you know, development cap and all of that, how that will be integrated with and related to an intensified, well-articulated community engagement program, because that's certainly not clear. I think one of the issues, I think several people have spoken to, is we need to, we can't just stop, you know, just sort of shut the doors. We need to keep moving, but we need to have a plan that's strategic and meaningful and so that the outcomes are timely, so that we can be better informed as we get the results of these plans, as we review upcoming projects. So could I ask the staff to make a comment about what their preliminary thinking is, or do they want us to continue to discuss the relationship between the revised and the new and improved community engagement and these ongoing plans and initiatives and ideas that are in the works?
Well, if I just might jump in just very quickly and respond, just say yes, okay, without getting into a lot of detail. Clearly, part of what we're going to have to do is to put together a map and a wiring diagram of how all of these things interconnect as it relates to starting to set up the processes for moving through these things. And there's so many kind of even different moving parts right now. And it goes back to our, at least our preliminary recommendation coming into here, which I actually think was very astute, given the discussion tonight, that we need to be targeting coming back, say, about the first part of February with, you know, a lot of the detailed recommendations in this regard. I mean, it's going to take some time for us to begin to organize this in a coherent way that doesn't preclude a special meeting or some other interim things that we could do. But obviously, making, putting this in order in a way that both graphically and as it relates to timelines and as it relates to resource capacity and how it connects to these things, it's going to take some intensive staff work to make sure that we try to put this out right for you.
And my other question is, or statement, is the issue of PC reform. In the midst of all of this, do you see that on the, I mean, I would imagine we see that on the shortlist. I mean, for us not to really look at that thoughtfully and with a lot of energy and insight earlier on, in the first, whatever, couple months or so of the year, I mean, I don't know what your thinking might be on that because clearly, there's a lot of deeply-held beliefs about this, about its use, about its potential, about the need for having that flexibility. So do you, without pinning down its precise date, do you see that as happening in the, you know, the shorter, closer, closer period or not?
Could, could we come back to that when we do our summation from, from all of the comments?
No, thank you.
I was just trying to be, I've also lived in Palo Alto. Next year will be my 25th year, so I'm still a newcomer compared to some of you. I really appreciated my colleagues' comments tonight. I think one of the things that we all really care about on council here is quality of life and maintaining the quality of life. And I think to a person here, that's really important to all of us. We all approach it in different ways, but it's all a real focus. And I think we've made a lot of progress this year on parking, but it seems so small compared to the problem and the magnitude out there. And while I'm up here, I'll actually give a shout-out to Nielsen Buchanan, who I actually really appreciate doing all the parking counts and the effort you've put into this. We have closed a lot of loopholes on parking this year. We went through that, and I think that was something that was overdue and was important to have done. What I'd like to see us do, however, is build a parking garage. You know, I think Councilmember Burt put it well the other day when he said, you know, 1,000 cars or 1,500 in the neighborhood. You know, we know that there's there, it's not going to increase traffic, we need to build a parking garage and get that done. That's my sense of it. And we haven't done that yet, and I think that's one of my real frustrations, is that we haven't taken concrete steps to get that done. And I think that's something we really need to do. So I'm hopeful that that'll come forward fairly soon in a way to do it. And I know, I forget now, Aaron, how much money do we have in the parking fund?
After all the projects that have been approved, pay so in the 24, late 2014 time range, we should have between $4 and $4.5 million.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's a good start on this, and I think that we can, we can get this done and make some concrete progress in that. I think that combined with the RPP should give some relief to the neighborhoods, because you're right, you drive through the neighborhoods there, and the parking is a real problem, and it is definitely degrading the quality of life. Traffic is the other thing we continue to hear about. Now, we started the process on a TDM, and that's the longer-term solution. I mean, the best way to solve both the parking and the traffic is to get people out of their cars, and the best way to do that was with a robust TDM program. And I think we're moving in a direction, albeit slower than I And I think we're moving in a direction a little bit slower than I'd like. I think it's next council meeting, we actually have the TDM study session. So the process is moving forward, and it'll happen, and hopefully, we'll end up with a, a, hopefully, we'll end up with a plan that gets, you know, people out of their cars, and then it's employer-based, and it works, and it reduces a lot of traffic. Because traffic is one of those things that I agree with everyone. I mean, drive around town, it's getting worse. It feels worse. And I agree with Councilmember Burt on the issue of, you know, it seems that traffic is worse. Now, that could be that, you know, given that we were in a depths of a recession and that there was very little traffic for that, I remember 2000, the traffic being really bad as well. I do remember that. I do remember people complaining about it. I remember finding it to be, getting on 280 was crazy back then, as it is now. But I remember in the interim, it wasn't that bad, and it had gotten better. So it's very hard to do that perceptions. But I think Councilmember Burt made a good point when he said that we have to trust the data that staff gives us. And I know, being in the mayor's office, I see it, that frankly, planning is overwhelmed at the moment. There's all these different initiatives, and I don't want them to slow down. I mean, I think they're really important. I mean, first of all, we have to do the housing element. If we don't get the housing element, Palo Alto will be fined, and we will actually have to update the housing element, what is it, in four years rather than seven years. There are all these penalties. So for all the people that say, well, just don't do it, or, you know, stand up to ABAG, we do stand up to ABAG. I thought Councilmember Klein made a really good point on that. We've, you know, fought these issues. Frankly, I voted against Bay Area Plan when I had the, Plan Bay Area, and when I had the opportunity. I know that's what our council would have wanted. And, you know, we do what we can on these regional issues on that. But nevertheless, it's state law, and we have to get that done in the next year. And that's going to be a big push on planning. We need to get the comprehensive plan done. We need to have, I want to see a visioning process, community engagement. Couple council members talked about that. I think it's really important to engage the community, get the input, and bring in new voices, and, you know, get that done. It's, but we also, it's taken two years so far at the Planning and Transportation Commission. I don't want it to take two years. Frankly, I'd like to get it done sooner than that, but that's probably about, I don't know, what do you think it'll take? If we have a good schedule, two years?
Yes.
And that's, that's my sense of it, right? But we can't let it be four years. We've got to really, you know, buckle down. And again, I think that comes down to resources. And my sense is the planning department doesn't have the resources to do that. So what I'd really like to see from the city manager's office as soon as possible is a plan to staff up planning to be able to solve these problems and deal with them in a way that, you know, reacts to the community's concerns. You know, little things. You know, I can't make decisions up here as a council member without the right data. And I can't go to the community and say, I made this decision because they said the traffic impacts are not a problem, or they are a problem. I have to have good data. And I think we all feel that way. And, you know, as Councilmember Burt pointed out on that, staff needs to be able to explain if it doesn't pass the smell test. So I really would ask both the city manager and the director of planning, take a careful look at those staff reports before they go out and when they're signed, and say, you know, does it pass the smell test? Does it make sense? And if it doesn't, you know, let's, let's take a look at it. You know, I, I thought the fact that it said PC for Buena Vista, you know, it's the little things like that that people then question whether or not it's right. And I think we really need to build trust, as several people said in the community, about the staff reports. And I think some of the suggestions about if there are policies in the comprehensive plan in which, you know, are not in conformance with us, I think it is good to set it out. I think it is good to put some of the more pros and cons in a staff report. I've always thought that. And I don't think that's just in planning, frankly. I think there's a lot of utility reports that should have a little more pros and cons in them. And I think that's in general in the city, we should have a little bit more of that so we have more information on which to make a decision. I think in terms of how we engage the public in a robust discussion about development, planning, and the future, I think the right way to do that is through the comprehensive plan. I think that should be the center, and I'd like to see staff come back with a plan of how we do that, of what that looks like. Because that is the vehicle that I think we need to do that. And I think we need to have two tracks. I think the housing element is part of the comprehensive plan, but on the other hand, the housing element has to be fast-tracked for legal reasons, frankly. We have to get it done by the end of next year, whereas it's going to take two years on the rest of the housing element. But I think we need to have that process. I also do think, and I think Councilmember Burt went through that and other council members, in terms of the PCs, what PCs, the PCs are not really the problem, but there's a huge issue in the community and understanding of the PCs. And I think some of the projects that people really dislike were not PCs. I think it's Arbor Real is one of them, frankly. And that's not a PC process. I think Alma Plaza was. Alma Plaza, I think we all, every one of us, I don't think there's a person up here that would stand up and think that's a good project. But what we need is we need a community buy-in to the PC process, and not this, this fear. And I think, you know, I, when I saw those towers proposed on the Ariaga, I think all of us cringed, because I think one of the council members said, once the community sees that, people still think that's around. We, months ago, I don't know, was it nine months ago or something like that, we said that, you know, that's dead. We're never going to agree to that. It's got to be in the context of the existing downtown. Come back with something else. But the community still talks about those towers. So I think that is a problem, and I think we need to be cognizant of that as a staff about those kind of proposals and the impact they have on the community. So I think this has been a good first step. I would like us to see us focusing on reforming the PC process and initiating that dialogue around the comprehensive plan, and having a sense of the community knows where we're going on that. I do think that we should have, and obviously I called for it, that we should have a moratorium on processing PC applications until we have a community buy-in and we have an understanding of where we are in the PC process. And that concludes my remarks. And I know staff wanted to finish this up.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council and community, and was a great, really a great start, a good conversation, and I'd just echo the comments about diversity of perspectives, which outlines a little bit of the challenge that we're going to have as we look at scaling this up. If I could just give you a couple of thoughts, a little more refined about follow-up, and just a couple of clarifications. So first of all, quickly, I don't want to sound defensive, but starting out, I think this may be the first time I've ever disagreed with Councilmember Klein when he's criticized me. But I did just want to say that the, I don't think the staff report expressed clearly why we pulled off of the December agenda both the 395 project, which we'd initially slated for December 9th, and the Ariaga Outreach Project, has nothing to do with the approval of, I mean, that project or consideration, but a community design process. And I think we need to put this in perspective. Maybell vote was whatever, November 5th. We're here December 2nd. We turned on a dime to put together, including over the holidays, this report and this study session and the discussion behind it about how to launch, launch this with the council. The next meeting we have on the 9th has several closed-session items. We've got the study session on TDM. We have a targeted action item on the Maybell Project. We have the review and findings report on the infrastructure survey. We've got three public hearings, one of which includes, again, the 240 Hamilton Project. So, I mean, we're going to have a completely full night as it is on that, that meeting. And then on the 16th, we've got the year-end review, the action on the neighborhood grants program, but most importantly, the discussion and action on the residential parking program framework, which again, will probably be a very long discussion. And our thought was that it would be best to have a framing conversation today on this as it relates to these PC issues to better inform what our next steps are. Now, that being said, I would like to kind of come back to that. A couple of things. We, first of all, we're going to have an interesting conversation with the clerk's office tomorrow morning, or, yeah, tomorrow morning, about how quickly we can get some turnaround on a lot of the commentary that we have here, because there's a lot of things the council said, and we've all been feverishly writing notes. But again, given some of the comments, obviously, accuracy and completeness is going to be something we're going to have to navigate as we move forward here. The points on the data are well-taken, but I think that we did not draw any conclusions about these data pieces. We were very careful not to do that. They were more, I don't want to say grab-bag, but some things to put in here. And I think we need to recognize that what we're going to have to do in this data area, which you have talked about, is it's really, it's a very different degree of, almost a data and research kind of initiative, supporting this comp plan process, and a lot of the, you've talked about a lot of these things that we're going to have to put together. So while we have to design a process, speaking to some of the last comments, we also have to have a kind of capacity and design recommendations about how we can support and implement these things. So first of all, the citizen participation and outreach process, that's, that's a big report and design and capacity issue we also need to bring back to the council. We have been, I think, very successful and been leaders in the area of environmental sustainability, because the council said this is important and let's do it. We've done great things in the realm of a digital city and open data and open government, because they said that's important. So you're now saying a really wide-reaching, state-of-the-art, best-practice outreach, involvement, engagement process around the, the comp plan and these things. We can do that, too. And that's going to take the same kind of attention and recommendation as to how to support that. Secondly, we've got this comp plan and cumulative impact initiative that Hillary and her staff have talked about as really the organizing focus around which some of these other planning processes that we have have got to kind of converge. But we've got to support that with this data initiative. And so we also need to bring back to the council, what's, what does that really mean and what does that look like? Let's be honest, we, we can't have one year's worth of traffic data. We're going to have to have 50 years worth of traffic data, and we're going to have to get it three-dimensional, and then there are going to be debates about even the methodologies about how we're looking at things by the end of the day. So I think we need to be accepting of the fact that this entire process is going to be a public collaborative, that's going to unfold in public ultimately, and it's going to be iterative and evolutionary. We have to have a little bit of tolerance sometimes, if sometimes we're trying to get it here fast, that it may not be absolutely perfectly right. Or if you want it perfectly right, then we're going to have to slow some things down. I mean, this is a big, I mean, these are big choices that you're going to be making, and you're going to rely on data and some of these other directives that you've given us. So that's, that's the engagement piece. This is the comp plan focus in particular. This is what it's going to take on the data side. And then on the PC reform issue, again, we can bring back a recommendation on that, but it seems to me that just hearing what the council has said today, we have two projects in particular, the 395 Page Mail J-Paul Project, which, you know, we do have a traffic study that's going to come forward. That could come forward separately on its own, and we also have, Councilmember Burt, I think, had mentioned it this way, we had this separate community engagement process on 27 University, which in my view, doesn't make any sense to do some, put all this attention in this one area when we're talking about a much more comprehensive community conversation, of which that can be part of it. But it would almost, it doesn't seem to be at a very effective, or even the most direct path to where we want to go. So I would think that we could look at coming back with some recommendations in, on those two areas for specific action, even before we've come back with all of these other components maybe fleshed out. So what I'm saying is, you have a meeting on the 9th, you have a meeting on the 16th of December, they're really occupied. If you want to have any more study session or whatever kind of conversations, and that's a special meeting, you need to tell us, is that in December? I mean, that seems really difficult to me. So is there something in January that you want, or do we go straight to, say, an action item with some, taking up this J-Paul traffic study, which I could recommend that we could do, and you could make some decisions as it relates to that particular project, and also to the Ariaga piece? Those are, those are issues that you could take separate from this larger discussion than that you want to have about to what extent you want to have some subsequent PC reform process. And I'm speaking to Councilmember Price's question about what's the timeframe for how you would start to design that. But I think we do need to acknowledge, we can give you a better update, you know, maybe before the break, on, you know, is the first week in February, is that the date that we ought to, February 2nd is the first meeting in February, is that the date that we ought to start trying to target, really bringing back in detail a lot of these, both this process design and the resource plan to support this? And you could redirect us as to whether or not we need to have an additional special meeting, or however you want to work through this. I mean, I don't think any of these things are going to be, I mean, this is going to have to be some protracted, and it seems to me routinely scheduled process that we're going to have to start to lay out, working through this with the council. So I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that, or that I might have missed.
I don't think you missed anything in that, Jim, but maybe I could just say one thing about the community comments that we heard today. You know, we got the benefit of all of your input, but what I really treasured was the comments we got today, because they hit every side of every one of these issues we've been talking about. We heard big ideas like demographic shifts. We heard comments on vision and fairness, constructive suggestions. Bob Moss had suggestions about how to frame the comp plan, comp plan discussion in our staff reports, and some of you reiterated those suggestions. We heard specifics about intersections that people don't think are working. We heard a diversity of opinion and the need to reach out to different voices. We had eloquent discussion of pipeline projects, the need for outreach engagement and new techniques, state-of-the-art or best practices, and a request, I think, which is what we're hearing from you as well, for a true two-way dialogue about what is important in the community. And everyone, I think, has reiterated quality of life, it's easy to say, but truly finding a way to foster that dialogue about what is really important. And so, you know, I think as Jim has indicated, we're happy to come back to you with very specific resource and schedule-type things, or if you desire a continuation of this more general study session discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Holman, you had a?
I do. I don't have the other agendas for the 9th and the 16th in front of me, but my question is, are any things on those agendas static, or do they have to be on those agendas? And the reason I'm asking is because I don't expect necessarily that staff in that amount of time would come back with, you know, vetting of some of the things we've brought forward. But I think it would be helpful if we could get this matter on one of those agendas, so that we could get clear direction to council, what we, I mean, excuse me, to staff, what we want to have as next steps.
That would be in this whole panoply of things that I've mentioned? There's no way we could do that. I mean, if you wanted a selective piece like the two PC projects that have sort of been out there, that's one thing.
No, I'm, I'm not making myself clear. What I was saying was that I didn't expect that staff would be able to come back with responses to the various things that we have brought up. What I was asking for was a space on one of those two agendas where the council could basically complete this dialogue that we're having up here tonight, so we can give clear, definitive direction to staff on what we want to have come forward next, as opposed to staff having to try to compile all the various comments, and so we can prioritize to staff having to try to compile all the various comments, and so we can prioritize.
So let's do a straw poll. I don't think we can do either the 9th or the 16th. Those are pretty full agendas. They really are. We could have a special meeting in December. I'm not sure it's necessary, but if council wants to, we could have, or they can let this come back in, in January or February after the staff's had a, what I'm hearing is recommendation from staff is let us come back in February, or, and, you know, go through this.
If we can get it done sooner, we will.
Right.
But, I mean, I, I think it's fairly clear that the council, I mean, the main themes of what the council has identified clearly, there's, you know, people may have different angles on it, but I, I think that we would know how to organize something to bring back to you for some decisions. You may disagree with maybe the way we framed it, but it allows you to be able to do that. And I, I wonder whether or not a whole council discussion on that would be that efficient, really.
I, I don't think so. I, I think we've made good progress tonight, and you're going to have a hard time summing this all up.
Well, that's the point. They're going to have a hard time summing it up, and if we could take motions, then...
I, I am very confident you'll do it.
All right. Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I think one thing that would be helpful is a prioritization of the questions dealing with our comp plan, our visioning, our engagement. So what are the steps that need to be taken first? And I think it might be helpful for the council to be engaged in that.
Yeah. So I'm going to start saying this more often, you know, just as an example, just to, to get ready for the meeting on the 16th, that goes out on Wednesday, the 11th. It's now the 3rd. That's eight days away with two meetings. Let's get realistic about what it takes. You were talking about doing a lot of thoughtful work with some degree of accuracy, trying to capture nine people's comments and 50 people with different perspectives a bit tonight. You need to let us have a little time to talk, to organize, to put some things together. And I think that that will be faster for the council to react to if we've tried to put that together in a, in a framework than it would be if you had another session, you did a bunch of motions, and we tried to figure that out. I mean, I think we can get, I mean, you, you can say completely disagree with what we recommend, but I think we can set up the opt, it's in a way to give you the choices that take you to the next place. I don't think there's any disagreement that we are not going to work on the comp plan, that we've really got to do this work on cumulative impact analysis, that we want community engagement, we want better data. I mean, all the main pieces are there. We just need to put some meat on the bone as far as the process and what it's going to take to do that. Now, there may be different things council members have suggested that you need to say, well, jeez, how do we fit that in? You know, questions about design or CQAT training, or, you know, again, how do we prioritize some of the things such as the business registry employment information within the data sets? But I think we can structure that enough, even you can have those discussions in a setting of an action item to give a specific directive about what you want to see. But, you know, we really, you know, I think realistically, we have to work over the next month on putting this together. We are going to be working on other things in the city while we're doing this. Okay.
All right. Councilmember Burt, you still wish to?
Well, I just wanted to get a little more clarity. I appreciate that any time in December is unrealistic, but I was hearing mayor talk about February or January. I would hope that we can get this in January. Does that seem feasible, a next cut at it?
One, yes, but let us, I mean, let us begin to work on it, and if we could give the council a report, you know, as we kind of head into the new year about where we are. As I indicated, it's perfectly feasible for us, I think, to look at bringing back those two projects in one way that are mentioned for a decision by the council. We could certainly do that. What's the meeting? This, January 13th, I think, is the meeting. We could definitely be on the council agenda for that. Do you have an issue with the traffic study, do you? Yep, I think we can do that for sure. So I think you can click, you can, you know, make your decision as it relates to the, the 395 Page Mill project and this, this outreach direction, prior, prior direction you'd given us on the 27 University project. And we may be able to do more than that by the 13th.
All right. You have enough. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks.